I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Board of Education for the School District of Waukesha, May 8th, full-board meeting. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who is responsible for disappearing the sun today? I thought we had spring on a roll there for a while, but I guess rain comes with springs. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Boyd.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Karen Reincheck.
Here.
And Joseph Como.
Here. Kurt is excused. He actually stuck in an airport right now, so couldn't get back on time for the meeting. Sue, will you also verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our bright lights. We do have two bright lights presentations tonight, so that's always good. We're going to have Rachel Herman, the Principal of Lowell, talk on Avid, and I bet you she's probably going to have a team. And then after that, we're going to hear from our Core 2060 Robotics Team. So we'll have Rachel take it away.
All right.
Welcome.
I have a crew. I don't think I just have a team. I've got a crew here tonight, so come on up, you guys.
Oh, this looks like a good crew, too. All right, welcome, you guys.
Well, thank you for having us, you guys. We are super excited to share with you Lowell's journey into Avid.
Thank you.
And so Ms. Evelyn here is passing out our presentation, just in case we have technical difficulties, which I know doesn't usually happen here, but just in case we're prepared. So I have with me several of our teachers, as well as several students who are going to share the work that we've been doing over the course of this year. So I have Michelle Creasy. She is our 5th grade teacher. Kelly Wysocki is our speech and language pathologist. Courtney Kenechka is our instructional coach. Becca Whipaschinsky is our 2nd grade teacher. And then I have Ms. Evelyn.
Ms. Ava. Ms. Madison. Mr. Adler. Ms. Summer. And Ms. Julia, some 2nd, 3rd, and 5th graders, who are really the key players behind the results that you're going to see tonight, that we've been able to leverage since implementing Avid at Lowell. So because they are the key players, I'm going to let them take it away. I'm going to start with Courtney Kenechka, who's going to share with you some of the celebrations we have.
So like Rachel said, we'd like to start with our celebrations. We have piloted Avid in grades 2 through 5 this year, and this year we've really focused on our organizational toolkits, as you'll be seeing the students share with you in a little bit. And we've also been focusing on focus note-taking. One of the celebrations we have is that by fall of 2019, we will have 100% of our core academic teachers at Lowell, they will have received training in Avid. And we're already great progress on that goal. We have a core team who attended Avid Summer Institute last summer, and we've also had numerous teachers attend the Avid workshops throughout this school year. We have another team going to the Avid Summer Institute this summer, as well as our teachers will be attending the Avid pathway at the SDW Summer Institute as well. We're really looking forward to next year and continuing to implement Avid and allow it to weave together with our social-emotional focus that we've had this year, because we believe that they fit really nicely together.
All right, so my part's really short, because I enlisted one of our 5th graders to do most of it, but Summer's going to tell you a little bit about the binders that we use. And our binders are our learning toolkits, and they're a key component of Avid organization. So come on over, Summer. And the rest of our Lowell Leopards are going to show you some samples of our learning toolkit. Oops, I'm sorry.
We're going to let you preview for a minute, and then Summer is going to talk for a minute.
I like to use all the time.
Okay.
There's cookies up on the other side.
I love post-it notes. I always carry my own post-it notes around.
Wow.
Good for you.
Okay, so you save time.
Why do you have three columns?
That's pretty good, so you have a place for almost everything that gets there.
That you gather it up? Okay, okay.
So we're going to have Summer, we're going to have you guys come back, and Board members, we're going to give you a chance to ask any questions that you might have, but we're going to have Summer showcase the highlights of the binders. Are you ready, Ms. Summer?
Our binders are our learning toolkits. They help us stay organized and organize our thinking while we're learning. Whether at home or while moving from class to class, we always have the materials we need with us. It helps us continue our learning at home, and we can share what we learn, what we are learning with our families. We have a color-coded system to help us keep each subject organized. We like our binders. It makes us feel important, and it makes us feel in charge of our learning.
Another key component with Avid is writing, and we chose this year at Lowell to work on focus note-taking. So students are going to come around and show you, you can go back to the same people you were at, they will take out of their binder their notebooks to show you. We worked with two-column and three-column note-taking this year, and it's a way for students to organize their thinking and to interact with different texts and information that they're learning.
Okay, let's go back to the notes.
Color-coded, so I actually didn't do these.
Yep, okay.
So basically, on the back, so like, it tells you what to, like, underline and what to color-code different types. So like, there's all these different colors, and on here, it tells you like, what to classify the color by, by what it was.
Is this provided here, or do you, the students write this?
Questions, and then they use that to write, like, paragraph two.
Okay, so then what do you do with this?
Comprehension questions on the screen. So it helps us by sorting, so like, if we need to look back on a certain subject, we can look for the color-coded system, look back and look for the color, and that evidence or what we need is right there, so we don't have to skim the whole here.
Oh, okay.
So it's just like a way of organizing and thinking on paper, using color, so we all have it.
And it says you did this?
Very nice. Like the subheading?
Have you ever seen those little white stickers that looks like a Cheerio?
Lowell Leopards, bring it back, bring it back.
Bring it back, bring it back. Do they still make those? Yeah.
I'll get you some.
With our note-taking as well, learners were able to set goals. They came up with their own student-designed rubric as to what they felt was important. After using note-taking two to three times, they realized what things needed to be there to make them successful, and so they were able to work with a teacher and assess themselves and set goals for their next round of note-taking to help them with their learning. Also, we've been incorporating what's called Avid Weekly. Avid sends out articles that are relevant information. The 2nd and 3rd graders here had those. If you saw those, very, very high-leverage articles, and the students get to dig in and use a lot of different strategies around them when it comes to reading strategies as well as note-taking.
Okay, and then the last thing we couldn't leave here without talking about is our State Report Card. And we are very proud to share that we received an overall score of 87.7 on our DPI report card, placing us for the third year in a row in the highest category of significantly exceeds expectations. Lowell's very proud of that. And the next piece of data we wanted to share that is pulled from that State Report Card is our student growth. And we just want to draw your attention to the upward trajectory, like the arrow moving upward. If you look at the school year 2017 to 2018, Lowell scored 99 out of a possible 100 points in that school growth, and that is students meeting their projected growth targets on the forward exam. And that, as you can see, is significantly above the state average. So that's another piece of data that we are very proud of. And we are excited to come back next school year, or next year, and showcase the growth we've made again. So thank you very much.
Although 99 out of 100, it might be really hard to beat, so if you pay a little bit, it's okay.
That's what 100's for, Rachel. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Baumgart.
And I think I'm going to ask the kids this question, or you can help if you need. Is this making their job at work at school harder, or is it easier?
Could you speak over the podium?
Over that microphone, then we can. Here, you got one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's easier, because then you have it at, like, when you're transferring classes, and you don't have to, like, carry, like, all this stuff. All you have to do is, like, carry it by its handle, and it's like there.
Well, thank you. You guys agree? Oh, they're all nodding yes, so that's good.
Mrs. Reincheck.
Thank you. So I was wondering if you had any siblings, or anyone, maybe friends that go to different schools, cousins, relatives, parents, that you're trying to help them organize and teach them how to do this? Yeah, can you give me an example?
So I have three other sisters. Well, so my littler sister, she also has a binder, but it was less organized when she first came home, so me and one of my other sisters had to help her, like, try to make it more neat than she had it.
Heather?
She had a classmate who had a pretty messy and dirty binder that one day I kind of helped them clean it out a little, because there were, like, papers flying everywhere, and folders were falling out of their binder every time they set it down, so yeah.
Any other questions? Boys and girls, you did an excellent job. Teachers, too, keep up the fantastic work. Does anybody else have any general comments that they want to make on how Avid has helped them? Or their students?
Oh, I thought you were asking the Board. I'm sorry.
Sure. I absolutely love it. I thank the Board and the district for investing in it. I think it's great for teachers, and it's the research-based strategies and that to help students with their learning and organization. When I had a coaching cycle with Amanda Wagner, the Avid for district rep, and she came in, I'm like, are we really doing this with 2nd graders, like, this note-taking? And after about two rounds of it, they are now independently setting up their notes, taking off with it, learning how to read them. Again, just one of those things you can't underestimate what they're capable of, and Avid has amazing tools to help us as teachers with the curriculum we have, so I thank you guys for investing. That's great.
I will add one, sorry. You want to go?
Go ahead.
I would just add that something that I think our whole building has embraced about Avid is that it's not a program. That Avid benefits all students, regardless of what career trajectory they're on, regardless of their background, their socioeconomic status. It is good for all kids. And when we look at what our role is as public servants, it is to support every one of these kiddos, to be able to open the doors that are in front of them. And this is a system that is nationally renowned, research-based, proven to be able to do that. And so I think that there's no question about buy-in, or is this what's best, because we know that it's for all of them, and that's who we're here for.
Did you want to say something?
She pretty much said what I was saying.
That sounds good.
Just working with a diverse population of students, students with varying needs, I see this as something that universally supports all of our learners on both ends of the continuum.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Baumgart.
Yeah, you were one of the first of two elementary schools that got into this, right?
Correct.
Are you having any jealous neighbors of the other schools?
I may have a jealous principal in the back. But she, I know that the district's mission and vision is to bring Avid to all of the elementary schools, and so I know that it's expanding next year, and I think the vision is that it will continue to expand, so I don't know that jealousy is the right word. Maybe it's a little envious that we got to go first.
But tied to that would be something we did so well with our iPads and stuff, the first wave, we used to call it, was there to help the second wave, et cetera, et cetera. Do you see any of that opportunity coming at you?
Yes, absolutely.
That was one thing that we talked about, is just that, that learning progression that we've done this year, and that we can help others then, as well, learn from what we've experienced.
Thank you. Mr. Dietz.
Rachel, could you tell me a little bit about the staff training that's been involved?
Sure. So we started with, we started with a team of 10 people that we took to our, to the first Avid Summer Institute, which was last year in Minneapolis. Lowell has a building leadership team, and we took, that is our Avid site team. So Avid requires that you have a site team as part of its programming, and so we decided to not separate the two. So our building leadership team, which is composed of teachers from across varying content areas, as well as grade levels. We have speech and language, a speech and language pathologist, all the way to our special education teachers, to our school psychologist went to the training. We really felt strongly that everybody needed to have an understanding. And then throughout the year, we engage teachers in what are called Avid workshops that are done by Avid-certified instructors. So to teach Avid practices to others, you have to be a certified Avid instructor. So they've engaged in that throughout the year, and then, like Courtney referenced, we're going to be sending another team this summer as well.
Well, thank you for your presentation tonight. Boys and girls, you did a wonderful job. Keep up the good work. I kind of like having two bright lights. This is, this hopefully becomes a habit. Now we're going to have our Core 2062 team come up, or part of the team, not the whole team, and talk to us about their accomplishments. Welcome, you guys.
Thank you.
Benjamin, you got your, your uniform on, I see.
I do.
Nice.
Thank you.
And your teammates.
And my teammates. Couple of them.
All right, so I'm Jessica Copeland. I'm part of Core 2062, and I'm the president of the team, and I'm a senior at Waukesha North High School.
I'm Aiden. I'm the scouting and strategy sub-team lead, and I am a sophomore at Weepa.
I'm Benjamin. I'm a senior at Waukesha South, and I serve as Core's Communications Director. And together, we're representing Core 2062, the Community of Robotics Engineers. It's the School District of Waukesha's FRC Robotics Team.
So Core is part of an international organization called FIRST. FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, and they have programs for kindergartners all the way up to high school students. Core is part of FRC, or First Robotics Competition, which is the highest level of FIRST, designed mainly for high school students.
Core's mission statement is that we strive to be a place where the passions of our students become skills, concepts transform into physical products, and zeal creates a positive community impact. And we mean this to be more than just a mission statement on our team. Our students try to live this every day, not only when we're at meetings or tournaments, but throughout their lives at school.
So our team, this is our 13th season, and we have around 40 students every year and around 15 mentors every year. We have students from all three high schoolers, and that includes some homeschoolers. So every year, we are given a different theme. It starts in January, and this year's theme was Deep Space. So basically, it's on a field about the size of a tennis court, and it's three robots against three robots. And this year, we had to perform, like, every year, the theme has different tasks, and this year's task were to take these hatches and those balls and put them into the rockets, which are on the sides of the fields, you can see in the picture, and the, or put them in the cargo ship, which is in the middle. And then in the last 30 seconds, you can climb one of the three levels on the red or blue platforms.
So after we received the game on the first, the first Saturday of January, we have six weeks to design, build, and program a working robot from scratch, and then we have to put it in a bag. So we have various sub-teams collaborating in order to create the final product, such as we have a mechanical sub-team who builds the robot, controls wires the robot, and the outreach sub-team submits, or writes award submissions and secures funding.
Each year, we compete at two regionals, with an option to move on to world championships at the end of the season. This year, our first regional was the Midwest Regional in Chicago, Illinois. At the end of qualification matches, we ranked 19th. We were regional finalists, which is what this trophy's for, which means our alliance came in second in elimination matches. We were recognized for our outstanding safety program, and we won the Chairman's Award, which is, covers five years of our outreach and STEM sort of experience within our community. And the Chairman's Award is what got us to be able to go to Worlds this year.
So our, our second regional was the Wisconsin Regional at the UW Panther Arena in Milwaukee. After our qualification matches, we ended up ranking 12th, and we were the first pick of the fifth alliance. Sadly, we lost in quarterfinals to the eventual event finalist, but we were again recognized for our safety program.
So our third tournament, then, was the World Championship in Detroit. This tournament had 700 teams from 35 different countries, and there were over 40,000 attendees at this tournament. We had 68 teams in our division, and we ended up ranking eight, or sorry, 12th out of those 68. And then we were bumped up to being the eighth seed alliance captain, and we lost in the
When we're not building robots, we're doing community outreach. Over the past five years, we've done over 100 outreach events. These include things such as demoing, demoing robots at Hillcrest Math Night in various high school open houses, presentations to potential sponsors and businesses, and demonstrations of our robot at public events, like the state and county fair.
One of our biggest outreach areas is for First Lego League, also known as FLL. This year, we started and helped mentor three FLL teams at Summit View Elementary School, and we also hosted two different tournaments. The first one was the FLL scrimmage, and that is basically a mock tournament for the FLL teams before they actually move on to their regional tournament. And two of the teams that were at our scrimmage actually moved on to the World Championship, and they said that our scrimmage helped them make it on that far. And then our second tournament, then, is the FLL sectional tournament. So once the teams move on from regionals, they go on to the sectionals, and we had 32 teams from that tournament, and nine of them were then qualified to go on to the state
We'd like to thank you for your previous support of our team for the past 13 years that we've been existing. If you want to keep helping our team or strengthen your support of the team, there are a bunch of ways that you can do this, continue your support of STEM in all of the schools, because that gives kids really the excitement about this stuff that makes them want to join our team later. Help us create more elementary and middle school FLL teams. One of our goals for the next three to five years is to put an FLL team in every elementary and middle school in the district. But to do that takes resources, which will need more investment in equipment, and it'll take teachers to act as coaches and help guide kids through the programs. You can also come to our tournaments. As Jessica mentioned, we host two FLL tournaments every year, and it's really fun to judge those. So if you want to judge those, we're more than happy to train you. And FRC tournaments are always incredibly fun to go to if you want to just come and watch our robot. Later this month, we will be at the Hillcrest Social on the 16th and Blair Flare on the 17th. So if you're going to either of those events, make sure to stop by and say hi. We'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you for letting us present to you tonight. If you want to learn more, you can go to our website, Core2062.com, or follow us on any of our social medias, and we're also happy to take your questions.
Questions do we have? Mrs. Reincheck.
Thank you. So Benjamin, what actual resources do you need to put a team in every school?
So in every school, we need to be able to have the robot parts in every school, so it's buying an FLL kit, which is the bricks that they need to do things, and the motors, computer modules, things like that. And then we also need teachers to help guide it through. We've had previous years, we've tried to start teams, and the teams will sort of falter out if there's not a strong advocate for it at each school, because we need someone who cares enough to continue working at it, so.
This might be for Todd. Todd, would a teacher get a stipend for leading a team, just as they would coaching an after-school event?
We have the Schedule C, I was talking about Schedule C compensation. Typically, if it's a club, they are, most clubs are compensated to some extent. I don't know what the amount would be offhand, but typically, they are.
Okay, so then it's mostly buying a kit, getting the kids excited about it, involved. You guys would probably go there, do a demonstration, say, here's the sign-up, and...
Yeah.
What's the kit? What does the kit cost?
Um... First-year team, usually $5,000 to get started, and it's cheaper there afterwards, because you're not rebuying a kid every year. It's just team registration fees. So it's a little bit of investment per team. A team is about four to 10 kids.
Four to 10 kids, one teacher to oversee that, right? One teacher?
One teacher, yeah, would be the minimum you want. Typically, first, we'd want two, two adults, just from a child protection perspective.
And any mentors? Like, would you guys go in there and help start it up? Yeah?
Yeah, our kids with our Summit View teams, kids from Core went over every week and helped out with the kids and with anything that they really needed, and kind of helped get them started.
Have you guys ever asked Waukesha Education Foundation for, we need seven more kits to finish every school that we have? Have you ever approached them with that?
We've written a couple of grants for it, but we haven't approached them with, I don't think, that big an ask yet.
Okay. Well, ask big, and worst they can say is no, and maybe next year, but you might get it.
Right.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one. So the Chairman Award, which is what got you to the World Championships.
Yeah, yes.
And they're looking at this program over the course of five years, you had mentioned, right? So what are they looking at?
So we prepare a submission for that award, which is a 10,000-character, roughly seven-page essay, paragraph, 500-character answers to 15 questions that they submit to us, and then we have to prepare a seven-minute presentation to a panel of judges, and then the judges are allowed to ask us questions afterwards. So we submit what we think is really good for what we've done for outreach and all of our FLL programs and all of our involvement with our community, and then they judge us based on, you know, how did we do compared to all the other teams at the event, and then they give it to the team that they feel is most deserving.
Now, I would imagine that leadership is part of that?
Leadership...
Is part of that recognition behind the Chairman, the Chairman's Award? Well, the leadership that you guys are portraying right now, to expand this out into our elementary schools, is a great example of that leadership. You know, you have the vision, you guys have benefited from this, you could just, hey, have fun and move on. have fun and move on, but no, you want future generations to get involved, and my hats off to you, our hats off to you, for spreading this and trying to increase the interest in something that has really changed your lives. And Benjamin, we've had several discussions on, on this. But congratulations to the team making it to the World Championship. While you were there, you know, who did you meet, and, and how did that maybe impact you and change your lives?
Jessica, you want to start with this one?
Sure. Well, the founder of FIRST is, his name is Dean Kamen, and he's invented many, many things. Some of them are, include the first insulin pump and the Segway, he invented those. So, he's inspired, because I've been in FIRST for, I think, 13 years now, because I started out in FLL. And he's inspired me to become, like, through the FIRST program and everything, a lot more creative and just, I don't know. I forgot what I was going to say there. I don't know where my brain went.
Um, I don't know. It's, it's pretty inspiring going to the world competition, seeing teams from all over the country and, like, looking at, I don't know, robots that you've, you've seen online and, like, dream about seeing and trying to find ways to improve ourselves by, yeah.
Yeah, FIRST is supported by, I mean, you saw the number of teams and the number of countries and things, so it's really kind of cool to meet people from the teams that I've only seen online. And so, you get to talk to them and really sort of make connections, and I, I just really like the, the foundation of support that it's provided. I know at Worlds, they had a bunch of meetups for alumni that come, because alumni stay very active in this program because of how much it's changed their lives, so it's really cool.
Excellent, excellent. Well, congratulate, Amanda, did you?
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had the privilege of going to a couple of your events, which was really exciting to see, and I see the leadership that you young folks have. How has being part of this program affected, affected you academically? Like, have you been able to apply things or just?
So, um, you didn't? Okay, you didn't get it.
Take it away, Benjamin.
Yeah, I just feel like I'm taking all of these. So, academically, I mean, it's really, most of the kids, the vast majority of the kids on our team are in advanced math or science classes. Almost all of us, if not all of us, are in AP courses.
I don't know what to say.
Okay, most of us are in AP courses. I mean, we are, the kids on our team are very high-achieving kids, and I think all of us have above a 3.0 GPA, if I'm not mistaken on that one. So, being in the season does take up a ton of our time, but it also reaps great, we were able to reap great rewards later from it. So, academically, I think our kids are some of the higher tier in each of the schools, so.
You also gain a lot of really good life skills. Leadership is probably the main one that I've learned.
Public speaking, fundraising, working with different people from everywhere with things. It's, it's a lot of things that we can use, even if we don't go on to do engineering, we can still use a lot of the skills that we've learned here.
I saw some of the effort, the hard work that you were putting in before this meeting. These guys were in dominating the boardroom alone, practicing their presentation for tonight, because they take this seriously, and they want to do a really good job representing their group, and you guys did an excellent job. Congratulations. Mrs. Reincheck?
Sure, I just wanted to ask, who's that fellow behind you, and if you want to introduce them?
Oh, yeah, okay. So, this is Brian Farrell. He's our lead mentor for the team, and he is sort of the guy that's in charge. We take orders from him, and I talk about him too much, but it's, it's fun. He's good at what he does. So, he's, lead mentors our team, so he tells us, sort of guides us. One of the cool things about our team is we're very student-led and student-run. So, we've been to competitions and seen other teams that mentors will fix their robot if it breaks, and we have just kids fixing the robot, which is really good for all of the kids. But sometimes, the mentors need to be there to tell us, "You might not want to do that." So, he's in charge of that, and he's very good at it, so.
All right, excellent. Thank you for your presentation. Keep up the good work and good luck as you move forward.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our recognitions. We do have one recognition tonight, and Dr. Cook, I believe you have the honor of...
I do.
...announcing this award. Did you prepare before the meeting, too? Were you at the podium before the meeting, practicing?
I was not.
Hey, I'm telling you, these kids are on top of things.
They are, they are. So, good evening. The Employee Recognition Award for May of 2019 is being presented this evening to Dr. Amanda DeSua. Would you please join me now? Amanda started in our school district. Amanda started in our district in 2013 as a school counselor stationed out of Summit View Elementary School. Amanda is one of two elementary counselors who serves seven of our 14 sites. We have two counselors at the elementary school, each one of them serves seven schools. We continuously receive positive feedback from the numerous staff that work with Amanda over the course of at least the past two years and beyond. Currently, she's been working on developing our administrators, our principals, and our district office administration, and, and she's been extremely positive in all that she's done. We, we continue to hear that from teachers, from principals, and from our district office staff, how positive Amanda is and everything that she does. She's been instrumental in redesigning the elementary school counseling and guidance scope, scope and sequence to maximize both the staff and student impact. So, she's delivering counseling lessons herself, but she's also working with our teachers to develop them to deliver the counseling curriculum. She works tirelessly to build the capacity of our educators around social and emotional learning. We've talked about that many times at our Teaching and Learning Committee, while also stretching herself to reach every individual student into the schools that she works with on a monthly basis. Additionally, she's taken on numerous leadership roles to advance the district work around social and emotional learning. She's developed our directors, our administrators, and our teachers around our second-step curriculum. We've talked about second step in a number of locations. That is the social and emotional curriculum that we're implementing 4K through 8th grade in our district. She's assisted in the developing of the district-wide trauma-informed care training, and has recently joined a committee to further advance district-wide mental health training. She's a strong advocate for children while also focusing on further developing our elementary counseling practices and our systems at the universal level. In her free time, given all of her works, I don't know how she's done this, she's also authored two children's books, one on managing anger and one on mindfulness, further advancing the field and social and emotional children's learning across, across the country. So, on behalf of the district, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Amanda DeSua on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Is Mom, is Mom doing good so far?
You want to speak for me? You can come up here. Well, it's an honor to receive this award. I truly can say from the bottom of my heart that the students and staff I work with bring me joy every day, and I feel extremely lucky to be part of such a wonderful school district. So, thank you for all your kind words. Thank you for the nomination and the support, and thank you for all that you do to support the students and staff in Waukesha.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Moving on to our student representatives, we have Natalia from E-Achieve. Rick, you're gonna, you're gonna connect us up here?
Yep, hopefully, the tech will work.
When it works, it's great, and when it doesn't?
That's right.
So, you're gonna have to speak in Natalia's voice if, if it doesn't work.
She's here. So, Natalia, why don't you fire up your presentation? There you go. And I need to connect here. And Natalia, why don't you give us a, a sample to see if we can hear you?
All right, I have everything pulled up.
Yep. Looks like you're good to go.
All right.
Go ahead and start, start the presentation. And so, Natalia was here back in January with her co-president. Natalia is the co-president of our Student Council. The other co-president was not able to make it tonight, so Natalia's going solo tonight, but has prepared some additional thoughts about the things that have been going on in the last couple of months at E-Achieve. She's gonna start, though, with a little more detailed introduction about herself and why E-Achieve is working out so well for her. So, Natalia, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so, hello, my name is Natalia Judge, and I am the co-president of Student Council at E-Achieve Academy. I live in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, and my hobbies include anything outdoors, playing my violin, baking, and spending time with my cats and mom. I have been a student at E-Achieve for the, since the 8th grade, so two and a half years now, and I'm excited to be well. All right, so I originally came to E-Achieve due to a severe cyberbullying incident that occurred at my middle school. Being in mainstream schooling became very difficult for me because these issues were never addressed by that middle school. My mother contacted E-Achieve through my middle school counselor at the time and explained what was happening in my former school, and I was able to transfer through an acceptance letter, and I was assured that bullying and cyberbullying would never be tolerated here, and I've only had a positive experience since. Many people ask how I socialize, and there are many opportunities through the collaborative meetings, our classes, outings, clubs, a private and secure social forum, and other, amongst other things, and I'm able to connect with others in my school and learn independently, which is very important for me. All right, so some current events and things happening at E-Achieve are the ACT 30+ Club, and we are very pleased to announce that we currently have 10 students who have scored 30 or higher on their ACT test, and this is a real testament to what great education students get at E-Achieve. Secondly, we have the rock climbing outing. A few months ago, the E-Achieve Student Council hosted a rock climbing event at Boulder's Climbing Gym in Madison, and everyone who went there had a great time. And third, we have last week prom, and the E-Achieve Student Council and staff held our 50th theme Dance the Night Away Prom at the Ingleside Hotel. The prom is for high scores and was a big hit. Students came with one person, a group of friends, or themselves. It is plenty of fun and has games, food, and dancing. So, we recently held a fundraiser called Penny's or Patience, and, which is for children suffering from blood cancer, such as leukemia or lymphoma. This is being done through a scholarship and our students and staff donations, and all are go toward the fight against pediatric blood cancer. And we have raised hundreds of dollars through the donations of students and staff. And lastly, are the Cave of the Mounds, which is a future outing and one of many, which is extremely popular, and it is being held in Blue Mounds, Wisconsin. This outing is being held in the beginning of June, and we have an opportunity to look through caves discovered in 1939, and this is an opportunity to learn and have fun simultaneously. All right, some amazing E-Achieve students and alumni include Holly Venkita Warren, and this E-Achieve senior and flutist recently performed at the Madison Symphony Orchestra in the final forte at the Bowls Young Artist Competition. She earned a scholarship for her efforts. E-Achieve has given her the needed practice time to reach such an elite level. McGuire Hens, this E-Achieve junior is getting rave reviews for her performance in the title role of the first stage production of Tinkerbell. Being able to set her own schedule has been key in allowing her to capitalize on this Brandon Lumke, this E-Achieve alumni of 2018 is a rising star in the stock car racing. He got a jump start on his career by attending E-Achieve, giving him the flexibility to travel and race while still getting a great education. Brandon is on track to win a NASCAR Rookie of the Year Award. His sister Emily is currently a junior at E-Achieve and a member of his pit crew. And lastly, Sydney Turpinning, and this E-Achieve senior represented Team USA at the ISU Junior World Cup Final in Bezzeldna, Italy in February. The talented long-track speed skater recently conquered the cold weather and the competition at the Junior Nationals on the Outdoor Oval in Lake Placid, New York. So, recent Student Council plans, in addition to the Cave of the Mounds coming up, Student Council's always been working on, has also been working on two other initiatives. Student Council's working on the box top competition, and this competition is between staff and students, and we are sending them in and waiting for the final results right now. It is a fun way to compete and contribute to the school and community. Student Council has also been working on next year's reading marathon, and we are getting sponsorships from local establishments, and you get to read and your favorite books and compete for fun prizes. All right, thank you very much for listening.
What questions do we have for Natalia? Mr. Baumgartner?
Rick, are they going to be on this one or not?
Go ahead, and I will relay them in case you can't hear them.
Quite simply, I guess what I'd like to say, not a question so much as a confirmation of something I've always wondered about, and that is, aside from the academics, are these kids having something to do that is socializing, that is, you know, part of life? And I think Natalia gave me the answer to that, that you're doing a lot of that, and it's very positive for me to hear that. I don't know if she could hear that or not.
Could you hear that, Natalia?
Not very much, unfortunately. Can you please relay it?
Yes, he simply was saying that the examples we gave of, of what students are involved in really answered one of the questions he's had about how our students are able to connect and socialize with their peers and, and others outside of school. So, thank you for that.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep. Mrs. Reincheck?
Thank you. I was wondering, how long does it take for a teacher to give feedback? I've heard that sometimes it's not real time, sometimes if a student needs help on something, they don't have a teacher getting back to them for days. What is actually frowned on that?
So, our school policy, our school policy on that is five business days. So, when, when a student submits a work, submits work, the, the teacher will get back to them within five business days. If it's just an inquiry by email, they have a question about something as opposed to something that was submitted, our policy is one business day.
Okay, so if a child is having, a student is having a need to finish their homework, and they cannot go on without a, a teacher answering them, but it's due the next day, how does it work if that student needs help, but then they have the one day to get back to them?
So, at E-Achieve, we have a paste chart that lists week by week what, what is expected to be done in each class, but those are really suggested deadlines, and if, if a student will meet those all the way through, they'll get to the end of the semester with minimal stress. There really is only one deadline, and that's the last day to submit work, which is the last day of Day 17. So, if a student has waited all semester long to get help until the very last day, we would try and work something out, but certainly, they should have asked for help long before the last day of the semester to ask for help.
So, if students are...
Thank you.
More than one question. So, if students are hesitating to sign up for an E-Achieve class because of the rigor, because it's, it's going to be a tough one, and that, and they're, one of their concerns is not having appropriate feedback and the time that they need because it's going to be so difficult, how would you say they could get through that?
So, it's definitely takes some initiative on the student's part to stay on top of things, to attend to their studies every day. It's very difficult if you wait to do all of your work on the weekend, or you let it pile up for a week or two. It becomes pretty crushing pretty fast. So, staying on top of the work, reaching out to teachers by phone or by email when you have a question, you'll get a response back the next day. If you don't, try the other mode of communication, phone or email, whichever you didn't try, and if after two days you still don't get a reply, then I want to hear about it as the principal, and I will follow up and find out what needs to happen to get a reply. I'm wondering, though, Natalia, if you might share a few comments on your experience in terms of getting help when you need help?
Well, certain classes definitely hold help sessions as well, such as my geometry class, which is, which has always been very helpful because I am not mathematically inclined. class, which has always been very helpful because I am not mathematically inclined. But there are also obviously multiple email calling, and I've always received very fast replies, so I've never needed to contact Mr. Nederstein. But yes, I've always had a response, and I've hardly ever needed to call at all, so.
I was just wondering what Natalia's plans are, her future plans? Natalia, what are your plans or future plans after high school is over?
Well, I am currently taking an AP class, and I will take several next year. I definitely want to attend college. I don't know which college yet, but definitely one that I qualify for, and I hope to, after that, head off to medical school or something along those lines, because the human body and anatomy really interest me, and there are classes available here such as anatomy and physiology, AP psychology, I'm taking right standard psychology at this point, but there are ways for me to focus on things that I want to pursue later in life.
Excellent. Any other questions that we might have for Natalia? All right, thank you very much, Natalia. You did an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Bye. I'm really glad that we've added E-Achieve to the list of student representatives. Always very insightful from all of our student representatives, no matter which school they're representing. Moving on to our chance for our citizens to address the Board of Education. Typically, we like to have this segment last about 30 minutes. In the past, we've allowed three minutes per speaker, but I'm gonna cut that down to two since we have so many speakers tonight. And at the 90-second mark, Amanda will give you a heads up for another 30 seconds of wrapping up your comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from any inappropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking or to speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that detracts from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our speakers and participants, we appreciate it if you haven't already done so, to silence your phones. And like I said, we do have a number of people signed up, quite a number. We're gonna start with Kristi D'Angelo, and after that will be Alexander Davies.
If I could just ask before we get started, the students had asked if they could come up here kind of together and present kind of in a row. They were told they would have three minutes, so now they're all gonna be scrambling with their, with what they wanted to say to the board tonight, that they've taken considerable time to put together.
How many students? Have they all signed up?
Yes.
We're just, we're just gonna go in order, we're just gonna go in order of how we signed up. I mean, it looks like the majority of these are students?
There's six students, and I think maybe four parents that were gonna speak.
Oh, okay, so you want the students to go first, is that what you're saying?
Well, I can start, that's fine, they just, they wanted, they wanted the support of each other when they're standing up here.
Okay, that's fine, we can do that, we'll do that. That's fine, but we would like then to limit those six to a total of 12 minutes, however you guys want to divvy it up, go ahead and do that. Is that fair?
Yes. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. My name is Kristi D'Angelo. I am a lifelong resident of Waukesha County, and I've resided and paid property taxes in the school district of Waukesha for the last 21 years. I have a son, Alexander, who's a junior at Waukesha North, and a daughter, Ashley, who is an eighth grader at Butler Middle School. We're here tonight, myself and the others, some of the others present, to discuss and address the possible cancellation of the AP Calculus BC class at Waukesha North High School for the 2019-2020 school year. I understand that the school schedules are still in process, and that those schedules are being set up, and that's why we're here, to hopefully have our voices be heard before any decisions are finalized. The students are here to address the board and to hope that you understand their desire to have this class continue. They are the ones who wanted to speak tonight, to present to the board and to the people who could make a difference in this, what their concerns are, and the detrimental effect it could have on them and their futures if this AP Calculus BC class is not offered at Waukesha North High School. The way we found out about this and the timing of this actually has been a little fortuitous for us, so that the students have an opportunity to speak to and address the board, and so I'm grateful for that. These students, my son along with the others, have been on this math trajectory to establish themselves and be ready for the AP Calculus BC class since they were in middle school. They were encouraged that time to work hard and to work ahead, and now as they reach the culmination of those efforts, they are being met with significant barriers to their continued education, and it appears that those barriers are solely due to the fact that they have chosen to go to Waukesha North High School, their home high school, rather than open enrolling into another high school or into another school district altogether, which certainly was a choice for them. There are 44 students in the district who have assigned up for AP Calculus BC next year. That more than warrants two sections of this class being offered to these students. One could be offered at South, and one could be offered at North, both of which have quality teachers and qualified teachers. Thank you for your time tonight.
How about if the six students come forward, and, because I don't mind you guys being as a group, let me know your names before you speak, and then what I'd like to do, actually, let me, give me your names now, so I can pull you out as a group here.
My name is Daniele Campo.
Okay.
My name is Jenna Creasy.
Okay.
My name is Logan Smolinski.
All right.
My name is Dieter Wilt.
Give me a second. Okay.
My name is Grant Kendrayer.
I'm sorry?
My name is Grant Kendrayer.
Okay.
My name is Alex Davies.
Okay, okay, guys. So we're gonna give, Amanda, we're gonna give them a total of 12 minutes, however you guys want to break it up, feel free, and if you want to just remind us who you are before you start talking, that would be great too, because we do take notes and try and remember who's saying what, so, thank you.
So my name is Daniele Campo. I'm here to shed a little bit of light of how this situation affects me and my future, to show you why some juniors from a high school care about what comes next in their life. Since I was little, I was always expected to be ahead in some way when it came to my academics, even if that meant sacrificing my free time and doing extra math flashcards, checking out textbooks, and doing practice problems on there, and in general going beyond what was asked of me. This expectation, which originally felt like a chore, started pushing me ahead of all the kids, and soon I was diving into concepts that I was supposed to learn the next school year. Math became something that I enjoyed because it made sense. I remember that since eighth grade, we were strongly encouraged to have a math class for all four years of high school, as it would only benefit us in the long run. I had already made up my mind that I was gonna follow through with this suggestion, no matter what it came to. That same year, I started my journey into exploring into new technologies, programming, computers, and I enjoyed every second of it. And as it turned out, math really does come in handy for what I want to do, as it helped me problem solve, think critically, find different approaches to a problem to help me eventually come to that solution. So you can see how this problem that came out of nowhere from what we were told, really put us in a corner with no options that we were all, that we all agreed with. We didn't come here to whine in front of you. We want to be able to work with you guys, get the most out of the time we have left in this district, to be the best versions of ourselves and to get to where we want to be. We ask that you help us get there and to not let our extra efforts be our punishments.
So my name is Jenna Creasy, and I'm speaking, and we have myself and Kandi, who can't be here tonight. We appreciate that we were able to respectfully share our thoughts with you all today. To start, we are very grateful to have such awesome teachers in the school district. The teachers here have supported us and always taught us at our just right level of readiness. These teachers always encourage us to challenge ourselves, to never give up, and to strive to reach our fullest potential. The journey started at SomeView when we were encouraged to work at an accelerated pace. After that, we simply continued this trajectory. In fact, freshman year, we were encouraged to simultaneously take two math classes just so we'd be able to take Calculus BC as seniors. With that said, we were surprised when we were recently informed that this class is not offered at Waukesha North. We were surprised that all those years of accelerated work would come to nothing. The class is available through E-Achieve. Some of the board members were kind enough to respond to a letter expressing my initial concerns, and they shared the past rate of the E-Achieve calculus students. I believe that this is a great opportunity for those who elect to take AP Calculus online because they are successful with this type of instruction. However, I have previously taken classes on E-Achieve and have a very difficult time with this form of instruction. Clearly, online learning is not for everyone. Certainly, AP Calculus BC will be challenging enough, and I can't even imagine taking it on an online format that has not worked for me in the past. As we apply for the colleges, we certainly cannot afford ever GPA drop at this point. As you may know, the class is offered at Waukesha South, and I do not have my license, and because both my parents work during the day, I don't have access to transportation during the school day. Clearly, getting to Waukesha South will be difficult for me. With that said, even if I somehow managed to figure out the transportation issue, I understand that the class was at a capacity of 29 students. If you consider the additional students from Waukesha North and Waukesha West, we would easily have that class as many as 44 students. Undoubtedly, because of our intended majors have a math focus, we are concerned about going a full year without math instruction. Moreover, we know that colleges are going to be looking at our transcripts, and we wonder if this could impact their decisions. As I did before, we have great teachers who have always encouraged us to challenge ourselves, strive to reach our fullest potential. I just hope that all the students at all of our high schools have the same opportunity to do this. Thank you.
First of all, my name is Logan Smolinski, and thank you for allowing us to speak on this matter that is very important to us. In my future, I intend on going into mechanical engineering, a profession in which high math, such as Calculus BC, is critical to my success. The class has been part of my academic plan all the way back to sixth grade, when at the Saratoga STEM Academy, I was pushed forward to take more challenging math classes. Until this point, I've been very happy with my education at Waukesha North, and I've been able to grow upon my gifts and to excel as, excel as my growth as a student and get ahead in my education. However, an issue that would come along with choosing the, choosing one of the two options given to us to take the class at South, some negative impacts from this would be, would come with transportation between the schools. If you were to go to South, it would eliminate two class periods, which we need to use to drive between the schools, thus eliminating the possibility of expanding your education in other fields as well as math. I also realize with going between schools, it would expose students to the possibility of traffic delays, which could prevent them from making it to class in time and miss out on information from teachers. Thanks for listening to what I had to say and for considering our point of view.
Hello, my name is Dieter Wilt. I currently go to Waukesha North High School, and in the future, I plan on becoming a software engineer, a field that is heavily influenced by math. I am here to primarily talk about the E-Achieve option that was given to us instead of the class at Waukesha North. While E-Achieve is good for many students, I believe that for many others, it requires being, or learning requires being in the same room as the teacher and as fellow students. Online school for many is not as engaging as being in a traditional classroom setting. The reduced supervision and lack of a teacher's physical presence can sometimes be detrimental to the student staying on topic and learning what is being taught. I have a personal experience with online not working through the Inspire program that I initially enrolled in when I joined Waukesha North. Here, the students were forced to do an online math course, much how many will be forced to do it now, and we failed, for the most part, to stay on course, and many could not learn the topics that were being presented to them even after re-watching the pre-recorded lessons. A traditional classroom setting allows students to help build on each other's knowledge as they can work together and work with the teacher for instant feedback, instead of having to wait the day that we were, or the day that the E-Achieve person said that it may take. While E-Achieve is a good choice for many, for also, for many of us in this group, it is not an option.
Hello, my name is Grant Kendrayer. I am currently a Calculus AB student, planning to become a software engineer. By third grade at SomeView Elementary, I was above grade level in math. I was unable to be instructed by a classroom teacher, so they decided to put me on the online Alex math program. Until sixth grade, I did not have a live math teacher, and I struggled with attending to the lessons and quickly got behind. It was three years of a terrible math experience. I chose STEM Middle School, hoping that I could be instructed at my level by a person in a classroom and continue progressing in math once more. For high school, I thought I could get a good education at North, and up until now, that has been the case. North does have a lot going for it. Calculus BC was secured on my academic plan when I started accelerating math in the third grade. I assumed that I could continue my math instruction like my peers at Waukesha South and Waukesha West, where they do have the accelerated calculus program. I understand why I cannot expect to take an engineering class at North, but this is straight-up math. Math is one of the basis of so many careers. I was shocked to hear that it was being cut. If we have to trim spending, how about not cutting core classes that are the foundation for further learning? Why are we funding other elective classes that are just the basis for, that are not the basis for future careers just to fill schedules? If Calculus BC is not available at North, I don't want North to get a reputation for being a school that doesn't value high academics. It won't take long for families of kids who are high achievers to decide to go somewhere else, and possibly outside of our school district. As far as the options we were given, really none of them were good. Skipping math for a year just wasn't an option, that would be 16 months without a high-level math course. I want to do well in calculus, not just fill a space in my schedule, but I am good at math. I do struggle with the time management skills that are needed to be successful in E-Achieve. That was made clear my freshman year of high school. While taking a class that is already going to be very challenging, I know that about myself. Online classes have not been a good experience with me. As far as traveling to and from South to take a class with 40-plus students in the middle of the day, in a hurry, in Wisconsin winters, traffic, parking, that should be enough said. That stress will be detrimental to my success in the class. However, this also means giving up two other periods on either side of sixth hour, where I could be learning and preparing for the future. Isn't that what education is supposed to be about? These three options are not personalized learning choices. These are flawed options, forced upon us at the last minute on a group of, upon a group of students who took, who take our education seriously. Enough to opt for very challenging classes, just like our peers at the other school around, just like our other peers at the other schools around town, but without the same quality of choices available to us.
We've got two minutes left, just so you know.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Alex Davies, and I'm a current student at Waukesha North High School. As you may know from my email, in middle school years, in my middle school years at STEM Saratoga, I was integrated into a learning course much like everybody else. This plan revolved around me being able to take Calc BC along with the other students present my senior year. And I've very recently become, come to learn that it is now being cut short, right when it would matter most. This is very disheartening to me as a learner, because I've been working very hard for the past seven years to maintain this course, all in preparation for college. After high school, I plan to go to an engineering-focused school to pursue a major in aerospace engineering. If I lose the opportunity to take Calculus BC next year, then a lot of my hard work would have been for naught. Losing an entire year of math will hurt my college application and will put me well behind other applicants vying for the same college spots. Most of the schools I would be applying to want to see that I've taken a high math every year in high school. College-level courses carry, carry much greater weight and will give me an advantage over my competitors. Additionally, having calculus under my belt going in would make things exponentially easier, will set me up for greater long-term success, and might even allow me to graduate early, which could save me tens of thousands of dollars in tuition. We've been told that the class is not going to be offered at South due to low enrollment. It seems like this is a problem that could and should have been addressed well before now. Honestly, as a student, this lack of transparency and communication on the adult side of things is very frustrating, because it makes me feel like my best interests are not being taken care of or kept in mind. Now we are faced with the deadline of this Friday to make our course selection without full disclosure of what the options could even truly look like. Not taking the course at all is definitely not an option if I want to be able to apply for the schools I want to attend. Finally, I think it is important for the board to know that every student here has devoted hours in the last two weeks to trying to find a workable solution. The timing cannot have been worse for many of us as the middle of our AP tests, AP exams for those AP classes we took this year. Instead of devoting time to those studies, we are here begging you to provide us to access to a core course at our homeschool. I realize that it is a numbers game, but oftentimes the numbers are not telling a full story. Please look out for the interests of the students when contemplating this critical decision, and thank you for listening to my statement.
Oh, you guys are good. Appreciate you guys making the adjustment here, as we have many people to listen to tonight, so, thank you. We do have a number of people left. I will just kind of take in order of how they were submitted. Maria? Maria Ocampo, or Orampel, Ocampo? And then on deck will be Laura Smolinski.
Okay, good evening, guys. So when you say it's one minute, so I cut it a lot of stuff, so sorry for my mistake. So, good evening. My name is Maria Ocampo and I am education aide in the Benton Elementary School. Really, guys, when you saw this guy in front right here, I felt in like, they are so brave to come in right here. Because they fight for the future now. They wanted to open the doors. They wanted opportunity to continue to open the door for the futures. I have a lot of things that my friend helped me to write right here, but it's most of them like they say. And I speak by my heart. This guy, they wanted opportunity to continue in education. They pushing hard for many years. I think so, I work in for education too. And all the schools they say, we are, we prepare the student for the global society and successful future. Can we give to them to the tools? Can we open the windows to them or just stop? Because we don't know. So I think so, because we create the future for them, we need to give it opportunities to do whatever they are capable to do.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura Smolinski and then Janine Wilt.
Hi, I'm Laura Smolinski. I'm here on the same topic. The students did a great job of going through a lot of the topics that we are looking to address here. I wanted to address the concern of that the reputation of North High School might get if we're eliminating courses of these higher caliber that, and I believe right now, North is one of the lower percentages of open enrollment choices. So if this, if these higher-level courses are removed, that I think that'll send that message even more and could detriment the, you know, people wanting to attend North versus other schools in the district or even outside the district to accomplish that. I have a couple of kids that are still, I have one in middle school and one in grade school as well. My middle schooler is on independent math in the Quest Program at Butler, so on a trajectory to go to the same route and potentially be looking for these higher-level math courses when she gets there. So I would love to see for that to be an option for her and not to have to go outside of her home school in order to get that. Additionally, with what we heard in the E-Achieve presentation before and the response time, if there's a lack of, if the response time isn't what it's expected to be and my child comes to me looking for assistance with Calc BC, I'm not capable of giving that. So I need these teachers to be available. My husband, you know, he can't come to us with these questions because we won't be able to assist. So I really appreciate you taking the time and consideration and seriously consider having this course at North High School. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Janine and then followed by Dean Kindry.
Hi, I'm Janine Wilt. My son is a junior at North High School. Up until now, his education has been fairly well, elementary is just elementary, but your school district offered him the STEM Academy. Well, good, we can expand our child's education, his learning, let him grow like you want him to do. And now he's at North High School and he needs this math course. He is going to college. Many of these kids are going to go to college. They need this math course. They need their math to be successful in their college degrees, what they want to be. Waukesha District, you always say, we're going to fight for these kids. We want these kids to succeed, but then we're taking away this class and making it difficult for these kids to continue their education, which they really, really need for their future. Thank you.
Dean, followed by Paul Reese.
Good evening. My name is Dean Kindry. I'm an electrical engineer by degree. I was going to originally speak about the impact of calculus BC-type course that I took many years ago on my life, but I think the kids did a good enough job explaining what it means to their future and how it will impact them next school year and beyond. So I'll skip that part. I'm a supporter of public education. I applaud the school district at Waukesha, very forward-thinking. We have, in the year of school choice, we've done things to attract people into our district. That being said, I've never had a reason to consider sending my children to a different school, either in the district or outside. I take that back. I sent my son to STEM so he could get advanced mathematics training, but I've never had a reason to consider going outside the district. As a homeowner in the North attendance area, I want to echo some other people's concerns about the perception of North High School as being a place where they don't have high academic capabilities. Right now, we've got a school, if you want to be an engineer, if you know that early on, we've got an academy for engineering. If you know you want to work in the health sciences, we've got a school for that. And I don't want North to become the school that if you want to go there, but you want to take high math, you have to leave that school, go somewhere else to take high math. These young people have worked very, very hard to get to where they are today. I think we could all hear that from their stories. They are the future problem solvers of America and we need to send them out into the next step of their lives, prepared to advance and succeed.
Thirty seconds.
We've been offered a couple of solutions and the kids are willing to work to find a good solution. Couple of things we've talked about, offering two sessions of the class at South, that's not a really good solution. It's a big, a big class. And having all the kids travel, perhaps a teacher could travel to North and run it there. Maybe a live simulcast, something. At the very least, consider extending the deadline. That's, I think it's two days from now for when decisions have to be made and we haven't got a lot of information on what we could do. Thank you very much.
Okay, Paul, followed by Ellie McHenry.
Hi, Paul Reese. I'm gonna try and do it in a minute. If you could give Ellie the other minute, because I'd really like to hear what she says and I don't always agree with her, but I'd really like to hear what she says. I want to talk about, a month ago, she, two months ago, she talked about teachers being attacked in classrooms. And this is just absurd and it really, and the more I thought about it, the more it just upset me. I remember when I was in school, that was just, there was a line that wasn't crossed. I don't ever remember going to school where any teacher was attacked by a student. I never remember that. And not to get backed up by the administration or the school board on attacks on teachers is just, that is too much to ask of them. There's a lot we ask of our teachers and there's a lot of sacrifices they make, but having to sacrifice their well-being and their health is just, it is absurd and it is one that no one should be asked to make. Thanks.
Ellie?
I already turned this down to two minutes, so. It's been a long time since we've faced staff reduction, or as we used to call it layoffs. Times and policies have changed. The last time we faced this situation, the layoff rule was last hired, first fired. While that policy was not perfect, it was certainly clear. Additionally, under the old system, if for some reason your former position opened up again, you would be called back and usually you got your old job back too. Today, layoffs are based on more subjective factors. A Rubrik scoring system is used to grade each layoff candidate. The Rubrik uses factors such as adaptability, professional growth, previous areas or grades taught, educator effectiveness scores, quality of service, and length of service to determine who is to be laid off. As we found out last month or, and the month before, that can lead to the layoff of staff who have been with the school district for well over 20 years. What is most disturbing about layoffs today is the new staff reduction policy, 3131, which includes this wording. No employee whose position has been eliminated shall have any right to be contacted by the district in the event that a vacancy opens in the future for which the laid-off employee may be qualified. Likewise, no such employee is entitled to a future position or is provided any preference over other applicants. So in addition to being laid off at, say, 55, you are also being told that if your position would for some reason be open for next year, you would not be called back. But if you heard that your former position was open, you could apply and interview for it, just like everyone else.
Thirty seconds.
Reducing or laying off staff has never been easy, but it used to be an objective, easily-understood system and at some point, you knew you were not going to be on the layoff list anymore. I am asking that the wording of the policy, 3131, be reworded so that if you are laid off and your position or an equivalent one opens up, that you will be called back and offered that position. I understand that other districts may be using this policy, but I like to think that we are a better district than that.
Okay, that is everybody that has signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Kim?
I didn't sign up.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh, sorry, we left you on the back table. Sorry about that, Kim.
No room but standing room only. Good evening. I just want to bring some things to your attention. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, I witnessed something so amazing that made my heart leap for joy. For two days, my sixth-grade son was actually eager and excited to learn. He made his own lunch and was on time for school. He looked forward to school with wonder and adventure in his eyes. Guess who else noticed? The teachers noticed. His support staff noticed. And most importantly, my son noticed. In fact, his teacher wrote him a letter to compliment him, which reads, "Today I observed AJ. You did awesome at camp. I saw you reach new leadership goals. You took risks by taking, by trying new things. You problem-solved techniques during STEM Challenge. Way to go, AJ." On Thursday of last week, I was driving home with him and he explained to me that he didn't have a great day. I asked him to help me understand what happened and he told me he was in biology class, working on a digestive system worksheet. He said he became frustrated with his speech to text technology. As a result, AJ was trying to self-regulate, so he chose to open a book to read. Then the aide said, "Close it, or I'm going to take it." AJ became even more dysregulated, so he put his headphones in and listened to his music via his iPad. The aide told him, "Turn it off and put it away, or I'll take it away." Then she started counting backwards from three.
Thirty seconds.
Two, one. The aide continued with an unkind tone, "Do you want to take a walk? His behavior is communication. We need to listen." Children with learning disabilities are four times at a greater risk for suicide. According to Yale Center of Creativity, students with learning disability, that's a quote from there. Kindergarten, I'm sorry. Educational equality means that every student has access to the educational resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education across gender, race, ethnicity, language, disability, sexual orientation, family background, and/or family income.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, absolutely. We need to do, I'm here because we need, we know better. And I truly believe that. And we can do better for our students and staff and our schools. And I have my three-minute speech here available for you to actually comprehend.
You can, you can leave that with Sue and, and anyone else too. If you have comments that you wanted to actually leave with Sue, we can make copies of that and distribute that to everybody. So, anybody else that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. We're going to move on to our minute approval. We do have several minutes for approval tonight. We have April 10th, regular board minutes, board meeting minutes. April 10th, an executive session. April 22nd, reorganization meeting. April 22nd, an executive session. And April 24th, an executive session expulsion panel. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes? Mr. Baumgart, sent by Mrs. Reinichak. Any corrections or discussion on the minutes? Okay, Sue, please take the vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
Seven.
Seven-zero. I miscounted. Thank you, Sue. Moving on to our communications report.
None this evening.
Okay. Diane, did you have a report to give on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I do. And I'm down to less than three minutes. I am pleased to report that 94 grant applications were submitted by our staff members before the April 5th deadline, totaling $154,307.58 worth of requests for innovative projects. WEF has only $35,400 to be able to support all of those quality initiatives, but our review committee is working very, very hard, spending many hours determining the recipients that will be announced at the end of this month. Our fundraising efforts got very serious when we realized that we could only fund 22% of the staff requests. So Lynette is working hard on outreach. We want to thank this month Benaco and First Student for becoming our newest $1,000 silver sponsors. We want to thank Rose Glenn PTO for a $350 donation and heartily thank all the staff who participated in Buck for the Bucks Casual Day right before Easter that raised about $500 for WEF and started a successful run for the Milwaukee Brewers. No, excuse me, Milwaukee Bucks. As presented in the WEF annual report last month, WEF has 38 scholarship and grant funds and WEF board members will be attending the North and South Honors Nights on May 22nd and West Honors Night on May 28th to present many scholarships to deserving seniors to support their further education. If you have a company, group, or individual that you would like to nominate for the 2019 WEF Awards as a corporate partner, a community partner, or as a person demonstrating a lifetime of excellence in education, you have just a couple of days left since nominations are due this Friday, May 10th. We are encouraged that the weather forecast for the WEF Run-Walk and Wellness Fair this Saturday, May 11th, will be a great success. It's not too late to register and even if you don't want to walk or run, come to see the 31 vendors at the Wellness Fair. As always, it takes a lot of effort to get all the volunteers needed for an event like this and I want to give a shout-out to the crossing guards who stepped up to serve as our root centuries. We have the registration open now for the golf outing as well, so you can go to the WEF website, events tab, to register for the golf outing or the walk-run at any time. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, Bill?
Golf outing is fine, but you can also register just to come to the dinner.
We would like to see more board members there. There, I added that.
Thank you.
Fifteen seconds went over. Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Moving on to our charter school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart. You have 15 less seconds.
That's what I need. Firstly, I'm going to mention the Scholar-Athlete Awards. At this time of the year, we begin in our high schools to recognize the Scholar-Athletes at the various schools. These kids work amazingly hard. They have to get 3.5 GPA and participate in a sport in case, in some, in some cases, they could participate in two, three, or even four sports. This year, Joe Como and myself had the pleasure to attend South's banquet, so to speak. This year, it was wonderful, large, about 300 and some odd, 50 kids or more were recognized, 500 parents attending. As a board, we should be very proud of these people. I mean, talking all three high schools, we should be very proud of the work those kids put in because it's big. Secondly, if you don't know it already, I will mention it again, but I think you do know, Whittier received a grant from General Electric this year for 25,000, just recently, for $25,000, which will be used to provide a Makerspace-type area for the students to use at Whittier. We had some interesting comments from the students. Karen and I were there that morning and it was fun to watch the kids come up with their own ideas for what to do with the money. They were on target, by the way. Lastly, Blair, on May 17th, the Blair, this is hard to say, the Blair Fair will be held. Ida tells me it's going to be a big deal this year and how it's been a pretty important thing over the many years it's been run. If you have a chance to stop by, do so on Fri-, I think that's a Friday, I forgot the date, oh, May 17th, yes. Between 4:30 and 6:30, it'll be held on school ground property. And that would conclude my report.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Moving on to our consent agenda, we usually start out with public gifts. Darren, did we have any public gifts given this month?
Yeah, two gifts. The school district received $3,500 from Aries Industries to be used for the MAID program, scholarship projects, and equipment purchases. And then an anonymous donor gave $7,000 to be used for senior student fees for those with fee waiver requests on file.
Nice. Thank you for those generous gifts. We continue to receive them from our community in monetary form and in many gifts of time we saw from the mentors tonight of Core. That's a lot of time too, so thank you for those gifts. Your agenda, your consent agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity in just a bit. Included in the items for approval are the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on April 24th. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet along with the minutes under item number 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda does confirm that the full board agrees with the expulsion panel's action. So at this time, does anybody want to have an item set aside for discussion separately? Okay, seeing none, Karen Reinichak, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 16 resignations, two retirements, three leaves of absence, and 15 new or modified teacher contracts, along with 866 full-time and four part-time teacher contracts. The committee also approved of one final notice of nonrenewal. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thinking by Amanda Roddy. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Epstein.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes six-zero-one.
Mr. President, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reinichak. Moving on to our superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
I'll make this quick. At your desk, you have an article from the Wachsho County Business Lights magazine, and it's about one of our West graduates who went through the MAID program, and you can see one of the success stories from that particular program. Tim Berry, a successful employee at Weldall who went through our MAID program. Secondly, normally, it's been a practice to not have any kind of athletic events on a Sunday with our weather. Two things are a perfect storm. Number one, WIA eliminated summer baseball, so it's pushed all our teams to the spring, and the weather has been very, very uncooperative. So I didn't allow the athletic directors to determine that if they really needed a makeup game on a Sunday, it would have to be after 2:00 p.m. Let's hope we don't have to, but given the condition of the fields and so on, they're not in great shape. All our baseball fields are natural turf, and they're pretty torn up this time of year. Another item, the South principal replacement process is in gear. Sharon Thiede and I met with staff today to get feedback from them. We will be back there at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow again to do some listing sessions on the attributes and the characteristics that they want to see in a successful principal. The retirement and recognition event is this next Thursday, May 16th. At that event, we are hoping that former board member Barbara Zink can be there, and we'll be honoring her for her years of service on the board and the district at that event. And then finally, you know, it's often strange when people have to exaggerate issues to make a point, but I just wanted to remind the board that we have not had a budget-related layoff in 11 years, not since June of 2008. And this year, there's one on the list that could eventually go away. That's my hope, is that eventually that works out. But in terms of, you know, talking about layoffs, we just have not had any. I would say the majority of staff in this district has not had to go through that process. And again, like I said, we haven't had a budget-related layoff since June of 2008.
Prior to your arriving, Dr. Gray, that process was, it was a difficult process, not only for the employees but for the board to go through and trying to pick and choose. So that's a credit to you and your team in how you approach things in this district.
Right. Well, we've made job security a very, our highest budget priority year after year, and again, that priority served us very well, again, going through budget processes before and after both Act 10 and Act 32. So just wanted to remind the board that we have had a very good run on that, and hopefully we can continue with it. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports, where a lot of the heavy lifting is done on topics. We do rotate which committees report first, and at bat first is Mr. Dietz with the Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee met on April 24th at 5:00 p.m. There were no action or information items on the agenda, but there were three discussion items. The first discussion item, instruction-related technology. Apple continues to enhance education tools around iOS and the Mac. Apple Classroom is used for classroom management, monitoring of control devices, and is now available for use on both iPads and Macs. Apple Schoolwork is available for teachers to easily distribute and collect assignments in an electronic format. Interactive flat-panel TVs are now replacing our traditional smart boards, as the price of large-format touchscreen displays has come down significantly. School District of Wachsho Instructional Technology Department recently surveyed all teaching staff to determine their preferences in display technology. At the elementary level, there remains a strong preference for a board that staff and students can interact with by touch. At the secondary level, staff indicated that they were more interested in a display that is large, clear, and bright, and the interactive nature is not as important to them. Staff also indicated a strong affinity to the continued use of Smart Notebook software, which has been renamed Smart Interactive Suite. Summer refresh of iPads will progress this year similar to last year. We will be refreshing wave four and five schools this summer and fall. Once the refresh is done, we will have completed a refresh of every student device at least once. This fall, we will be entering our seventh year in the Wachsho One program. We continue to grow and learn new ways to utilize student devices. Any discussion on that section?
I had a quick comment to make. You were talking about the refreshing of all the devices, and we've gone through that at least once here. And that's really thanks to our constituents. Back in 2001, we had passed a referendum to inject monies into technology on a regular basis, and we have held to that. We have always reserved that money to continue to put it towards technology, and that's really the foresight of this community to have approved that, and we've held strong to that. And so we have the ability to keep moving forward in that. And there's other districts that struggle. How do they fund their technology? So we've been fortunate to live in a community that puts a priority on that.
Good. Anyone else? Okay. Second discussion item was infrastructure-related technology. Twenty-plus years ago, the school district of Wachsho made a very wise investment when they chose to partner with the city of Wachsho and Wachsho County to build a joint fiber-optic WAN network. The fiber network has paid for itself many times over and is continuing to provide platforms for expansion and cost savings across the city. School District of Wachsho, the city and the county have since formed a larger organization called WECAN, which now has 11 members across Wachsho County, with the potential of adding several more in the future. The growth of this organization provides cost savings and flexibility for all members. And any discussion on any of that?
Yeah, I remember when we decided to approve to work with the county and the city on putting in this network. It's good to see that we're expanding that partnership, because it really does save our taxpayers money, a lot of money over time. Remembering where we were with our connectivity being regular cables, not fiber, we would have never been able to implement the technologies into our classroom and at the instructional level without having this fiber-optic network in place. So another good decision made many years ago that's paying dividends quite over and over.
Long time, over and over, yeah.
Yeah.
Good comment, thank you. The last discussion item was related to life-safety-related technology. Installation and configuration of the new digital iPad or IP speaker clocks is nearly complete at all three high schools. These systems will allow staff to communicate more efficiently in any emergency situation. The installation of these was funded by the recent Wisconsin Department of Justice School Safety Grant. Work on the custom-developed door monitoring and alerting program is also nearly complete, and the training for principals and support staff will happen this summer. Any discussion on that? Comments? Mr. President, thank you. That concludes the technology report for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Moving on to finance and facilities, you've arrived just in time, Mr. O'Brien. Sorry.
I expected the meeting to be over with by now.
You have a lot of topics to cover.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be pleased to cover it right along here.
And you can't do it within a two-minute timeframe that we gave our citizens, can you?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Action items. We had the approval of the Express Agreement. We took action on that. Over the last few months, discussions with Express Swim has been taking place regarding a new lease agreement. I do want to make the board aware that the FNF Committee approved a new agreement that covers three years of two one-year extensions and generates $20,000 more per year for pool maintenance. There's no action required by the full board on this. It just required committee approval, which we did, five to zero. Approval of the E-Achieve contracts. Last month, Principal Rick Nettesheim provided the committee with an update on E-Achieve's enrollment, student achievement, and school improvement. This month, the committee was presented charter contracts for E-Achieve Academy and E-Achieve Elementary, which have been updated to reflect current state statutes, policies, and practices. None of the changes are significant, however. So I have two motions tonight. The committee approved the E-Achieve Academy contract, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion on the first contract?
Just so that everybody knows, there's two contracts, because there's originally E-Achieve, and then we had another contract for the elementary portion, which will be the next motion that's coming on.
I just wanted to make a comment. I know at our first FNF meeting a month ago, we had gone through these contracts pretty thoroughly, and there were some questions that the FNF Committee had on them. And actually, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the STEM contract. However, I will go back to E-Achieve, because then I can be on topic. Mr. Nettesheim had given a really good, detailed report at our last meeting that highlighted, I think, a number of things that, as far as I'm concerned, really had kind of greased the skids for setting up to continue the school moving forward. And that's not just yourself as a principal, Rick, but everybody who's involved with the school. We heard from Natalia tonight, and it just, things are working, things are working real well, so hats off to you guys. Any other questions or discussion on the first contract? And this is for the ninth, is it ninth, or is it sixth through? This covers which grades?
No, it covers everything with the elementary.
Six through 12.
Six through 12, yeah.
Just to be clear. Okay. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Okay. The committee also approved the E-Achieve Elementary contract, and I so move.
I second it.
Discussion on the elementary E-Achieve contract? Okay, Sue.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Kurt?
Okay. Next action item is approval of 2019-2020 student fees. The committee was presented a recommendation for the student fees for the 2019-2020 school year. There will be no changes in fees for 2019-2020, with the exception of the elimination of AP course fees charged at the high schools. Food service fees will remain the same. The committee approved the student fees, and I so move.
Is there a second on the fees?
Second.
Sent by Diane Voight. Is there any discussion on the fees? Just real quick, the trend that we have going on here in our district is to reduce fees or to eliminate fees. And, Mr. Clark, do you have a sense of how that has been going down over the last few years?
Yeah, in 1718, or maybe it was 1617, we eliminated middle school course fees. And then in 1819, we eliminated all high school course fees, with the exception of AP lifeguarding and a few banned courses. With average savings, I want to say it was $35 to $40 per middle school child and $80 per high school child per year. This year, we've eliminated the AP course fees, and I think the only thing left in place might be a banned fee, but then lifeguarding, but are looking at lifeguarding, they are walking away with a lifeguarding license, so there's a takeaway for the student. So we've left that one in place. But I think we, you know, when we started this process a few years ago, the goal was to increase opportunities for kids to take any course they really want. So I think we're pretty much there, if not where we need to be or had hoped to be.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Dietz?
With AP course fees, does that include the AP exam, or is that separate?
They still have the exam fee.
Okay.
It's just the course fee that we've eliminated. The fee that they sign up for with AP, and there is an appeals, appeals is probably not the right word, but a recourse for them, but that's all handled between them and AP.
Okay. Other questions on our fees schedule? There is no change that has been recommended for this year. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Kurt?
Okay. The next action item was the approval of the Wachsho Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, and STEM Charter School contract. And I would like to thank the administrative staff, Mr. Baumgart, and the STEM principals for working so hard to try and make sure we have, rather than just checking what we did in the past, we tried to make some improvements, and everybody was receptive to that. The committee was presented a five-year renewal contract for the STEM program with policy and wording updates to be accurate and consistent with the S-School District of Wachsho language. The committee approved the contract, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion?
Some of the changes is, just so anyone who doesn't know, I think a lot of people are involved in this, but there was this change in how we define the openness of the school to allow it not be just at per-grade level and then close it out, because you could have the open space in other grade levels that wasn't really shown, so they had to change the charter for that again.
So it's a whole school population that we're taking into consideration.
And we eliminated the preference for staff to have children in there. There still can, the ones that are there, but for going forward, that's not there anymore. And we have provisions that, they're gonna make a lot of efforts in trying to make it a more inclusive environment at the school. It is lottery-based, so parents do have to try and enter the lottery to get into the school. So there's a lot of information, efforts that are gonna be made by the staff and administration to make sure more people are aware of that, so they apply, as we try to improve those numbers, and all that was greatly appreciated.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the STEM Charter School contract?
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Kurt?
Okay. Now we're gonna talk about real dollars. Consideration resolution awarding a sale of approximately $45 million to general application promissory notes.
of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2019, providing the form of the notes and levying a tax in connection therewith. Michelle Weiberg from PMA was in attendance to discuss the first draw to referendum financing plan, including forty-five millions of bond, forty-five million dollars of bonded debt. Since the referendum, interest rates have fallen, and we anticipate, and we anticipate interest savings, interest expense savings at around three million dollars. Final bond sale information is at your desk tonight. Uh, we do have a representative from PMA in attendance tonight to share the final bond sale information. Mr. Clark, would you be so kind to introduce him?
Phil, if you wouldn't mind going up to the podium and, um, I put in, uh, at your desk, the actual resolution, the backup, uh, documents, and handing out a summary that Phil, that Phil's been working with Michelle, um, and I in developing. But the sale happened today, so we couldn't get you the information any quicker, literally the, uh, the little packet was printed, um, about five minutes before the board meeting. So, um, Phil, if you just want to walk us through, um, the results, I think even from what you saw at FNF the other night, it's, it's better than, than even that, so I think you'll be pretty pleased, so, so you can hit the highlights.
Yes, uh, thank you. If you flip to the first page, it shows an interest rate chart. This is just a chart from where, um, from when the district went to referendum in November of 2018 until the present, and I wish I could take credit for this, but it's really just, uh, good fortune that interest rates, um, have trended in a positive direction for, for borrowers and for the district.
In a negative direction?
Well, in a favorable direction.
Favorable, yes.
On the borrowing side, yes. Maybe not so much for people investing, but, um, and yes, even in the last couple of days, um, since Michelle was here on Monday, uh, we've had a little bit of improvement since then even, so it's a good time to be in the market, um, and, so if we go to the next page, I'll, I'll kind of highlight the, uh, talk about the highlights of the final structure of the issue that was priced today. So, it's still, you know, it's a ten-year note issue, as was the plan all along. Um, the final three maturities are prepayable, which is part of the overall strategy of being able to prepay debt if you so choose and have the opportunity in the next few years. It came with the, um, very good credit rating from Standard and Poor's of double A. These notes were underwritten by Robert W. Baird, um, and it came in with a final cost, or real rate, we'll say, all-inclusive cost with all cost of issuance included, of a 2.08%. Compare that, I guess, to what we looked at ahead of the referendum, albeit we were being conservative, um, but that was a three twenty-five, 3.25%. So, if we compare what the interest cost would have been at that rate to this final rate, that's where this three million, it's actually three and a half million dollars in interest reduction from, albeit conservative estimates, but, um, that's still very positive. Now, there is, actually, I'll, I'll hit this on the next page. The detailed financing plan, um, this shows in sort of this blue-green highlighting today's issue, or the price, the issue that was priced today, the forty-five million, um, so these are all final, presuming you approve the resolution. These are all final amortization and rates, um, but there is still this fifteen million dollar piece that, uh, remains to be issued. So, when we talk about the interest cost, there's still part of it that's not locked in yet because of the strategy of spreading out the borrowing, so you don't, um, not, so you're not, so you don't spend the, you don't, uh, extend this, um, spending the proceeds too long. You don't want to borrow too far in advance of spending all the proceeds, so that's why there's this second piece that's happening later, and the timing-
Because we're penalized for that, correct, or?
You could be penalized if you borrow too early and then aren't able to spend it fast enough. That's what I'm trying to spit out. And still, though, this fifteen million dollar piece, um, is something we're going to watch very closely. If we do see interest rates kind of trending higher on that line, it may make sense to say we might be willing to give up the, the penalty on the investment earnings, which is the penalty for not spending the money fast enough. Uh, we, we want to measure that against the additional interest cost if rates are rising. So, in other words, the timing of the second piece, while it's shown here, if you look, is perhaps being issued in January 2020, um, it could happen earlier than that. That's something that's still in play.
So we're gonna watch that closely so that we're, um, trying to do the best we can for our constituents with respect to our borrowers?
Absolutely.
We're trying, we're trying to balance a number of factors there.
Yes. There are, like, a little bit of competing factors-
Yeah.
-that we're trying to watch, but the, there's a way to measure sort of the bottom line, what's gonna be the least costly.
And we're depending upon your firm to help us through that?
Absolutely, yep. Um, I guess the other takeaway here is we're continuing the, uh, to hit the mill rake target that's been talked about for a while now, and that's, uh, an impact of seventy-two cents. Because interest rates were lower, that actually allowed us to have the amortization be, uh, faster, meaning we're paying back principal faster because of the lower interest rates and still hitting this target. Um, that's really all I have. The last page is just disclosure language.
Do we have any questions?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Como. I mean, based on what was, uh, projected, we're three and a half million dollars ahead on the larger portion, the forty-five million, so, um, even the fifteen million, no matter how it shakes out, we're gonna be ahead of the game because it's one-third, a third of what we've borrowed to date, and there's pretty unlikely that we will lose our entire 3.5 million savings that we have to date. So, we're in good shape, we had good timing, uh, I think we put it to voters at the right time, um, I think we picked the good, the right amount for our needs, and, uh, we just happened to borrow in the right cycle as well, so, kinda hard to complain about anything on this one.
Any questions? Darren?
Just one other thing on the, the fifteen million dollars that's still standing. One of the things I think the next, well, unless, uh, interest rates really start moving quickly, um, is the outcome of the state budget and where our overall tax rate may come. Um, there was a lot of state aid involved in that in the governor's proposal. Now, there's a lot of conversations to be had between now and then, um, but if we see a, our overall tax rate being another drop, we've been averaging about a forty cent drop each year the last three years, um, we might want to move on the fifteen million dollars sooner. The nice thing about it being a loan versus the bonds is we can go, we can close on that loan a lot quicker than you do a bond issuance where you have official statements and all this reporting, and, um, so if things do start moving, we can turn that around in a pretty short period of time, so, um, a very, a very good result. Um, I, I was down at the underwriters this morning, and they said this is the third lowest interest rates they've seen on ten-year borrows, like, the last twenty or thirty years, so it's a pretty rare, a pretty rare event, so.
You sure you don't want credit, Phil?
Well, I'm willing to take it.
I thought your contract, I got the credit and you guys got the blame, but we can, we can negotiate that later.
Yeah.
Other questions for Phil, or?
Thank you.
So, based on the information shared tonight, the committee's previous decision on referendum finance plan, I moved to approve the resolution awarding the sale of approximately forty-five million of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2019, provided from the, providing the form of the notes and levying a tax in connection therewith. I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second?
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion on the resolution that was placed at our desk just a few minutes before the meeting started, the final. We had a, we had one in our packet last week, but it didn't have any of the final numbers in it, so. I really liked the summary that he just gave us, because for those of us that weren't involved with it at FNF, that makes a lot of sense. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the resolution for our forty-five million dollar general obligation promissory notes borrow.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight to zero. Kurt?
So there were a couple of information items. We had the monthly budget report. The committee was presenting the budget report for the month of April. Five million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars was reported into the general fund revenue, and nine million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-one was expended during the month. There was one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars reported to the special agents, education fund revenue, and two million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, seventy-three dollars was expended. The district is operating in accordance of our budget projection in all areas. Referendum update, Mr. Clark provided an update on the construction slated to happen during the summer of 2019, including structurally secure entrances at eleven school sites. A total of fifty-seven bids were received, with nine of those being from Waukesha-based businesses. Due to inflationary factors and market demand for services, the early results are slightly higher than the original estimate. The total budget for the summer of 2019 stands at four million, six hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. We had a couple of discussion items, uh, south pool floor. This committee discussed the south pool floor and where it should be repli- whether it should be replaced or if we're able to go without it. This is the temporary flooring that goes in to make part of the pool more shallow, shallow. After reviewing information provided by state and local officials, it was the consensus of the committee that the removable floor will no longer be utilized. Um, just anyone who didn't, didn't watch, it's very unsafe to install that floor, and it's kind of impractical. So based on the information we received, it, like, it was required for us to put that floor in anymore. Continue to monitor the situation with, uh, with Blaine.
And this is a discussion item for this group, if there's any questions or? Mr. Baumgart? I remember that when we put that portable floor in, uh, were the purposes of it for public use more than for our own use, or?
Right, well, it's also, it, it's just, it make, well, it could be for our own use too, but it's, it was to make it more accessible for handicap people, make the pool shallower at that end.
And are we still having open, open, open to the public sessions there?
We can't have a one-hundred percent open swim if we don't have that temporary floor in there, but we can still have open to public specific types of, uh, things that, um, Express can manage. We could have a senior swim, uh, they could join a club, it'd be kind of like, you just can't have a broadly open swim without that.
Okay, and that's probably not been, originally we did, but that hasn't been an issue, has it?
It hasn't been an issue. We, we don't have people broadly using the pool, but we do have, we do have citizens that use the pool.
Okay.
And we'll have to make some accommodations.
Accommodation, okay. That's all I wondered. And it, it actually was becoming a liability. People were getting hurt when it was installed, sometimes installing it, people were getting hurt, um, it just, it wasn't working out too well, and I think Mr. O'Brien didn't take like fifty-four man-hours to put it in and take it out. It's, it's, it's like eighteen volunteers, three hours a time, it's a-
It takes divers, they use divers. I, it's a, it's a pain. I, I was out there five weeks ago to look at the pool with a visitor, and, and Blaine talked about it and said it's just, he says it's just too dangerous, so.
The one other thing I'd, I'd mention on the, the thought of replacing it to, to bring it to code, um, you'd have to make it out of stainless steel, which would make the weight of that thing, it's aluminum right now, which would make that in and out even more laborious than what we have currently, and really, you'd get, it would be so heavy, I think you'd just have to put it in and leave it in without a lot of effort.
The aluminum will be, uh, sold and recycled, so that, those components won't be there anymore, we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of them. Uh, they're just in the way, they can't really be used. Need to shallow up that pool, just have to think of something else, that's all.
Any other questions or comments on that topic? Kurt?
Okay, School Resource Officer Services asked the administration to report out on the research that's being done for possible alternative school safety service models. We had the situation yesterday, I believe, or the day before, at STEM School in Colorado, and it was a private security person that responded immediately to the situation and helped, uh, prevent a worse incident from happening, so having a person full-time on-site is one of the things that, uh, we're looking at with this possible change, whereas right now, officers can be pulled away for whatever circumstances. So, um, still studying it. There was a lot of discussion at the meeting the other night, but, uh, we're not at the point where we're able to give enough information for every, anyone to feel totally comfortable with the change yet, so.
Question, Mr. Baumgart? Yeah, I, I watched the, uh, meeting on video and appreciate the fact that there's a lot of research being done on it, but I also was marginally concerned, some of the comments, Kurt, that you made were when we do this and we're planning to do this and stuff like that, and you gotta understand that there's nine board members involved in this decision, and so far, we haven't said anything other than study it, so, don't make the assumption that we are going to do this, which is what I heard once or twice in that video.
Well, there isn't an assumption that we're gonna do this, but I will say, uh, I can't understand why we wouldn't look into it if it's-
I didn't say that.
If it increases safety and it's at lower cost, and I think I said that several times.
You did.
Okay, so, um-
And, and at some point, we're gonna want nine of us to talk about this.
Nine of us can talk about it, yes, but, um, we won't be making a change without nine, all nine board members voting on it.
I think you need to know that. You're leaving a different impression, is quite simply what I'm telling you.
Well, you know, let's be clear, uh, I had it put on the agenda for FNF so that board members could be informed, all those who watched the hearing, as well as the members that are there, even though we're not ready to quite present the concept to the board yet. And as I said, stated that night, on Monday night, we're not ready to present the concept to the board yet. Just keeping you up to date as we go.
Go back and look at some of the other words you used, and you'll see what I'm talking about. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Kurt?
That completes my report.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held, uh, May seventh, 2019. We have one action item and one discussion item that appear on the agenda this evening. The action item was the approval of math technology supplemental resources. During this school year, various supplemental math software programs were analyzed, and teachers provided input on what would best meet our student needs. At last month's meeting, the findings were presented, and through the process, Matific was the program that stood out as best to fit our vision and needs for the fourth and fifth graders. At the middle school level, it was decided to continue with ST math at the sixth and seventh grade level. At the eighth grade level, the decision was made not to purchase any supplemental digital math resource. They will continue using the existing math resources that they can access for free from open-up resources. On a vote of three to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the math technology supplemental resources as presented. We request board approval and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? Mr. Baumgart? Just quite simply, uh, to back up on this, uh, we, we've been talking about this for two, three months now, so this is not a surprise or anything like that. We've, we've studied it, the, the ten marks is gone.
Gone.
Uh, we had to, we wanted to, and the schools wanted to replace it, so that's really the action we're taking, and financially, it's better than a even-
Yeah.
And we really didn't have a choice on this, because- Well, we could have said nothing. Yeah, okay. That's it. Gotcha. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Liam Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Pat?
Sir, our discussion item is the Avid data update. Advancement via individual determination is a research-based K-16 college readiness system. Avid equips students with intellectual skills and behaviors for academic success and rigorous coursework. Avid empowers students with strategies necessary to navigate the educational landscape through an explicit focus on high expectations. Avid improves organizational and study skills, develops critical thinking and collaboration, and exposes students to college. Amanda Wagner was present at the meeting to provide specific overviews of Avid Elementary, Avid Secondary, Avid Elective, and Avid Excel, and our growth of Avid across our entire system. Any discussion on it, is a discussion item? Obviously, the Avid presentation was fantastic, and I don't think there's a board member that is not in favor of Avid in our schools, so. Kind of speaks for itself.
I knew, and we had good examples of working with the older students. I was really, it was amazing with the younger students. I, you know, as the one teacher had put it, you know, she was impressed, you know, we don't necessarily give our young learners as much credit as to what they can really learn if we give them a chance. And I know the young lady who was talking to Todd and I and going through the folders and I'm like, I don't know what grade she was in, but she was a pretty young lady, very articulate, had was well organized and, you know, you could tell she was into she was into it. So I'm a little surprised it's working as well with the younger students. And we've had two elementaries so far?
Two, and I think there's two more.
Coming on for next year?
Yeah, at least two more.
Yeah. Mr. Baumgart?
One thing, I don't think it was in your notes from the meeting, and I hope I got this straight in my head, May 20, I believe, Amanda has encouraged us as board members to visit during a certain hours. You might want to look for this in a packet. There's going to be an opportunity for us to see what the graduates are heading for after they leave us in June. And it's it's a it's very interesting, you know, these are kids that probably wouldn't have been thinking about college four years ago, so. Again, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I know it's the 20th and I think it's like roughly the noon hour type period.
Right. Thank you, Bill.
One other point about Avid.
I think I had it in the.
About Avid is they also give us data about the students that go to college. So for me, what's important is I would love to know what our students do after they leave us. Are they really college-ready? How they do in their studies and if they complete them? You know, I'm always worried about a student going to college for three years, getting student loans, and then not finishing and having all that debt. So we do get data.
We do.
From the Avid, our Avid students that go to college, so we can see how they're progressing.
That's very positive.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, it's very good. It's great data. I wish we would get that on on the students that don't go through the Avid.
Right.
And then see how they do in college, because that's really how we could measure our success as a district, if we really are getting these students ready for college.
How would we capture that? I guess is the question.
It's been something we've been talking about for years.
Yeah, the state universities could potentially provide that. I don't know that the privates would.
Yeah, right.
But it would have to be either that or it would have to be a voluntary.
Yeah, right.
Reporting by the student.
There'd be some holes in it probably, but Avid provides us with a lot of that data.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I just wanted to point something out, or career. Not everybody goes to college, there's the traits.
Yeah. Most of them book the apprenticeship.
Really?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And could we have students self-report, I guess?
Well, we could. Self-reporting is always.
Is that accurate, though, is the question?
Yeah, right. Be some gaps and holes with self-reporting. It's always my concern.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Any other discussion?
No.
No? All right, thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 4, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. McCaffrey. Moving on to safety and security, given by Ms. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, the Safety and Security Committee meeting had to be postponed for the month of April due to a last-minute schedule conflict with the committee members. The May meeting is to be determined as the previously set date is a conflict with a district-wide event, so we are working on that and it'll be announced soon. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I have the approval of revisions to the Professional Staff Handbook, Support Staff Handbook, and Co-Curricular Handbook for the second reading. Each year, the administration reviews the employee handbook and makes recommendations for changes based on a variety of items such as budget, ease of administration and understanding, and employee suggestions. The committee and board are provided with the portions of the handbooks that contain the significant changes. The first reading and review of the revisions was presented to the board at the April 10 Board Meeting. An itemized list of recommendations for changes and the relevant sections from the handbooks were included in your packet. The official handbook, once approved, is valid online only to make available all hyperlinks and ensure the reader is using the most up-to-date version. Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to the Professional Staff Handbook, Support Staff Handbook, and Co-Curricular Handbook as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
By Mr. Deetz? Each year, we go through the handbook. We don't necessarily have to just update it one time a year, one time a year. We can update our handbook at any time, really. It just so happens that usually we're looking towards the end of the year to make the updates. There were a number of them. I don't want to say it wasn't anything large. I guess that's a more of a matter of opinion, but there were a lot of smaller tweaks, I guess. That's how I would summarize it. Any questions or discussion on it? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving our handbook changes.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Sue?
Next, we have the approval of recommended candidate and the contract for the position of Director of Equity and Educator Development. The administration is recommending Dimitri Beekman for the position of Director of Equity and Educator Development. Mr. Beekman comes to us with five years of successful principal experience in turnaround schools in the Racine Unified School District. Dimitri has an intense drive for excellence, yet has a calm demeanor with parents, students, and staff that allows him to bring peace to any situation. Dimitri will help lead efforts to build outreach and engagement with our minority subgroups in Waukesha. His leadership demands high expectations of himself, and he is a learner and a listener in the process of working collaboratively to achieve a common goal. Dimitri Beekman will help focus teacher development around culturally responsive teaching practices while continuing to grow educator development and helping to close achievement and opportunity gaps here in Waukesha. His positive personality, relationship-building skills, and asset-based thinking will be a value add to the teaching and learning team. Mr. Beekman received his certification in leadership from the National Institute of School Leadership and his master's degree in administration and supervision from National Lewis University. He also has a master's degree in interdisciplinary studies and curriculum and instruction from National Lewis University. His K-8 teaching certification is from UW-Milwaukee, and his BA in business management is from Assumption College in Worcester, Massachusetts. Dimitri Beekman's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Dimitri Beekman for the position of Director of Equity and Educator Development.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Singing by Amanda? Just so you know, this vacancy is due to Sharon being going to be our replacement for Chris Hedstrom in the future. And Chris couldn't be with us tonight due to a funeral, so Sharon stepped in her place. Sharon, I would appreciate if you would maybe explain there's some slight differences between what you, what your position current, you're still in that current position, and what Dimitri would be asked to do.
So with the role shift and my knowledge that I bring with educator development and some of those pieces and things that I've streamlined for the department and having teammates pick up some extra pieces, we were able to free up a percentage then of the position to be able to be applied towards that equity piece of it, which, as you heard Karen read, Dimitri brings a lot of expertise in that area to support the district. So we were able to, again, just move some responsibilities with my transition to free up some additional time and allow for that addition.
Thank you. Any questions on Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I see in his background, it's mostly K through eight. Nothing in the upper grade levels.
Is there concern or question you might have, Kurt, or?
Well, will he be working with the upper grade levels?
He'll be working with all staff and principals in staff development, professional development, similar to what I did in my current role.
Other questions, comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0.
Next, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of recommended candidate and the contract for the position of Principal of Prairie Elementary School. The administration is recommending Carly Solberg for the position of Principal of Prairie Elementary School. Carly Solberg was the unanimous choice for Principal of Prairie Elementary. She is a principal who leads with a sense of urgency for students while setting high expectations for herself and her teachers. She does this in a genuine way, being a learner first. She spends a lot of time in classrooms, working alongside teachers to give them the support and feedback they need so that everyone can be their best selves for students. Carly is a strong communicator who makes sure that all families, teachers, and students are focused on the mission and vision of the school. Carly is a firm believer that what teachers do every single day matters and impacts the trajectory and growth of the students in front of them. It is Carly's moral imperative to make sure each day that we all bring our best selves to this complex work of teaching and learning. Her use of data, her instructional leadership, and her visibility are just some of her strengths. Carly is smart, driven, and takes responsibility to ensure that people feel cared for throughout the entire school community. Ms. Carly Solberg has been the interim principal of Hawthorne for the 2018-19 school year. Prior to that assignment, she was a teacher, coach, and a dean. She has built positive relationships with staff, families, and community organizations across Waukesha while serving in multiple buildings in her roles as classroom teacher, literacy coach, dean of teaching and learning, and has also served as summer school principal for the past four years. Carly received her Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Carroll University, and her teacher certification program was completed at UW-Madison. Additionally, Carly has reading teacher and reading specialist certifications from coursework at Carroll University. Carly Solberg's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Carly Solberg for the position of Principal of Prairie Elementary School.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Singing by Mr. Baumgart? Or? I heard Mr. Baumgart first. Discussion?
I'll just say, I've had the opportunity to see her over at Hawthorne on a couple occasions and previously in some of her, I guess, effectiveness coaching and the summer school thing. She's just had a constant period of success with whatever job she's been in, and I really think she's going to do a good job over at Prairie. I know Prairie doesn't need another turnover, but they, she'd be a good one.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. And last, yes, last, we have approval of recommended candidate and the contract for the position of Principal of Hawthorne Elementary School. This action is not needed at this time. We have approval of compensation for administrators, non-unit managers, and support staff. The Human Resources and Compensation Committee reviewed internal and external salary comparables for non-teaching staff. Information was provided in your packet. The committee is recommending a 3.21 increase, 3.21% increase for clerical staff, a 3.53% increase for educational assistants, a 2.5% increase for custodial and maintenance staff, and a 2.87% increase for mid-management and non-unit managers. Mr. President, I move to approve the compensation for administrators, non-unit managers, and support staff as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Singing by Amanda? Mr. O'Brien?
Could I ask some clarity on the on the increase for administrators, mid-level administrators?
There was action on mid-management, but not cabinet level, director level, there was no action on that?
No, I'm talking about I'm talking about the.
Ms. Deetz, can you add anything?
Darren, you can take that, that's good.
Yeah, I was just getting back to the worksheet here.
Did you have further comment or question on that, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I would just say that, not that I'm going to vote against this or anything, but we do have budgetary issues, and it is it is something that we take into account with all our staff at every level, our educators, all the way up through our senior administration. And I'm not saying we're not doing that in this case, but I think that's very important for us to keep that in consideration as we approve these things.
And one of the comments that I'll share with you that I made at the committee level is, you know, some of the percentages, especially for maybe the top three or four here, those percentages might seem high, but a lot of those people are hourly workers and we're looking at like 40 cents an hour increase. So those percentages seem pretty high, but they're to our lowest-paid people in many cases. And then if you take a look at the custodial and maintenance group, a number of years ago, eight, 10 years ago, maybe not quite that far, eight to six years ago, there is a group in there that we we were over, we felt we were overpaying, and we kind of put the brakes on them for a number of years. And now we're starting to get to the point where we're not as competitive with those folks. And Darren, you might have a few more statistics on that custodial group, that portion of the custodial group that I'm talking on?
Yeah, when, I don't know when this happened, must have been 2012, 13, the second shift custodians, we grandfathered and froze their scale for a handful of years. And over the last few years, and this year's another one, a lot of those grandfathered staff are retiring out. But when that that lane was created, we also, or frozen, we also created a new second shift custodian column. But, you know, when two, three years ago, was that beginning hourly rate, we just couldn't attract anyone. So as those older, more senior second shift custodians retire out, we're bumping that second shift active column. We're up to $18 an hour now. I think we're in a pretty good place. For a couple of years ago, we were down at $16.50 or $15.50 maybe three years ago. So there is, and that kind of increase is captured in there, but it's the savings from the retirees in that case. The aides, we continue to do a higher percentage than we do the other, any other group in the district, because again, they're lower paid, so on a percentage basis, it's skewed a little bit, but also, you know, it's an area where we're struggling to attract employees just like everyone else in the economy right now, I guess. But so we are targeting certain groups within these percentages, so it's a lot more than just that number that you're that you're seeing that we're trying to accomplish.
Other questions or comments, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, like I said, I'm going to vote for this, and I'm sure these are very reasonable wages. And I just want to make the point that when it comes to our educational staff that's on the salary schedule, they, like all our employees, are going to see a change in their, say, their benefit compensation because they're eliminating the HSA contribution to help balance the budget this year. But another thing I don't think people are aware of is that. But another thing I don't think people are aware of is that there's the base rates based on the bottom of the chart, and that's where the cost of living dollars come into. And that's not a true cost of living increase for the average teacher or even for teachers at the top of the scale. So those educators that are in the upper cell that haven't been able to move because they're senior educators and they're in that upper cell, they haven't seen true cost of living increases ever since Act 10. So I think it's something that the public maybe isn't aware of, but it certainly is something our educators are aware of. And the other thing is that we're finding, in order to attract qualified staff, we're having to pay more now. We have to go out and pay more for people. So it's not easy to hold on to staff, and it also costs you more to bring in good qualified staff under the present environment. So there's a lot of pressure on us in terms of how we control our compensation package. And with the educators being the largest portion of our cost structure, they feel it each and every time we have to deal with it. So that's why we should pay attention to the whole picture all the time.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, we're looking to take the roll call vote on approving the compensation for administrators, non-unit managers, and support staff.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to policy given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay. We do have seven action items tonight. They fall into pretty general categories. On your list, you'll see them, there's actually three new and four revisions. I'm going to skip down to the other new one, but they got them out of order because they were going in numerical order instead. But I want to do the three new ones first. New ones are to be read at the previous board meeting for the first reading, and it's the old way of doing things. This would be their second night and approval if granted. The first one is Policy 2271.01, Start College Now Program. This is a new policy covering the Start College Now program. Like the early college credit program, Start College Now took effect July 1st of last year and first applies to participation in fall of 2018. Previously, the Start College Now program was part of Policy 2271, and this new policy simply separates out the Start College Now program from the early college credit program, which now exists in the 2271. Questions on that one? I'm going to take the three new ones as a single vote.
Is this just for technical colleges?
No, I don't think so. Joe, not just technical colleges?
Yeah, Start College Now does apply to just the technical college system. The early college credit applies to a four-year college/university setting. The reason why you both were lumped into one policy was because the policy system that we use was ahead of where the DPI was as far as getting its final rules out. So they had one rule set first, but they had a requirement that we address it in policy. Then they created the second set of rules after that policy was adopted, so that's why we're splitting it now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
It's nice to see the date in there because I think the old policy did not inform parents of the due dates, and I think that added to some of the confusion we heard earlier tonight, along with a lot of other things.
And a lot of the dates and deadlines are covered in student handbooks, just so the board is aware.
I guess a lot of people look at the board policy and think it trumps anything else, but it's nice to see that they're finally in there.
Okay.
The second new policy is Policy 2420, Education for Employment. This new policy more clearly identifies the requirements of PI 26 and addresses the grade level requirements for providing education regarding employment. This policy also explains the regulatory requirements and addresses the requirements for the district's plan regarding education for employment. This revised policy is a new policy required for compliance with PI 26. This is something we've been doing all along. It's now inward, so to speak. That would be, any questions on that? And then I'm going to move to the third new policy and take a vote on the three of them unless you want to separate something. Okay, the third new policy in your list, your packet, is Policy 8462.01. It again is a separation of a policy which used to have two different elements to it, which is separating the two. Threats of Violence, this is a new policy developed out of the child abuse and neglect policy, which previously incorporated reporting and training obligations for both instances of suspected child abuse and neglect and instances of threats of violence. These two obligations were connected in that there are overlapping requirements and statutory incorporations, and the contents of the obligations and policies have not materially changed. However, the decision was made to separate the two types of reporting situations so they are more readily accessed and reviewed when needed. Any questions on that one? Again, it's an old policy split into two parts.
So we have three new policies before us.
Yes.
That you'd like to vote on?
I am going to vote on, unless somebody wants to separate one of those or two of them, vote on the three, and I'll read them off. I will be moving for approval of 2271.01, the Start College Now program. I'll be moving for approval also of Policy 2420, the Education for Employment program. And I will be voting, adding the move for approval of Policy 8462.01, the new program called Threats of Violence, and that's what I'm moving.
Okay, is there a second?
No, I second.
Singing by Ms. Voight? Discussion on those three new policies? Questions? Mr. Brian?
Just in general, I want to talk about the policy process and the policy development process. We have a process of a committee that puts together policies, works on policies with administrative guidance, right? And before Neola, it used to take a lot of time per policy to make sure the wording was right and every board member was comfortable with the wording of the policy. Post-Neola, we've gone to more of a compliance standard rather than trying to go into details of each policy, especially with the myriad amount of policy. I will say that if I was to take policy and try to micromanage policy committee without being on the committee and then complain about the work that's being done in the committee, I would think that would be inappropriate because I'd wait for the final product to come out. I'd expect the same respect for any committee on this board.
I hear you. Any discussion on these three new?
On the agenda?
Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Comall.
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Bill?
Yes. Now there are four revisions, recommended revisions. These would be on existing policies. This follows the part of the revision we made to our protocol a couple months ago, where I will have them read once and approved at the committee level and then brought to the board for one reading and approval. Might be just a little bit more complicated. Okay, the first one is Policy 4162, Controlled Substances and Alcohol Policy for Employees That Transport Students. This policy has been revised to specify which substances must be tested. The scope of the policy has been clarified to include those employees who perform safety-sensitive functions as opposed to only drivers. So it's not just people driving programs, driving students around, it's other safety concerns. On page three, it's probably the bulk, most important part of it. When it comes to return to duty of somebody who has been taken off duty because of drugs, it talks about the fact that they will have to be ready-to-duty tested after substance abuse professional has determined that the employee has successfully complied with the prescribed education and/or treatment. The employee must have a negative drug test result or an alcohol test, depending on the situation, with an alcohol concentrating of less than 0.2 before resuming performance of sensitive duties. And subject to any legal requirements, employees who are eligible to return to performing safety-sensitive functions may not do so without the approval of the superintendent. Other than that, on earlier pages, there's just some specific definitions of the different drugs that are involved. So any questions on 4162? Okay, the second revision policy is 5540, the Schools and Governmental Agencies. And I want to get to... This policy has been revised to reflect that a school official will attempt to contact the student's parent after law enforcement questions a student, unless specifically requested not to because such contact would unduly impede the investigation. The addition of the word "attempt" was included because school personnel do not have a requirement to reach the parents when law enforcement is questioning a student. You'll find this on thirds of the way down, page two. It's just a very simple change, attempting to contact the students after questioning.
Questions? Mr. Brian?
So if I'm a parent, I want to know if my child's being questioned by a police officer at school. I think that's just normal, positive practice. These children are in our schools, they're under our care, we should be protecting them, and we should make sure their parents are aware. What this is saying, no, we don't have to do that. If it impedes an investigation of the officer, that's really kind of...
But it says...
That's really not, as a parent, that's not what I want.
If parents are complicit in the crime that is being investigated and we get in the way of that, then we're impeding that investigation. And we deal with that situation a number of times a year where there is some questionable activity that may be going on in a home, and the student is questioned because they may or may not be involved in it, whatever the situation is. And if we do call home before the questioning happens, we are putting ourselves in the middle of an investigation that we could potentially hamper, and thus making the school environment and the community less safe.
Well, I'll tell you, there's a civil rights issue here, and when you take a minor and you have them being questioned by a law enforcement officer without the permission of their parents in our schools, there's an issue there.
Has this been reviewed by our attorneys in Neola?
Neola's attorneys.
Gone through Neola's attorneys, and this is a common practice in the school system that I've worked in.
Okay, so Neola's recommending that?
Neola has recommended this language. They've given us the choice. This is a recommended choice that we could make as after the questioning happens. I can certainly go back. We don't have to vote on it tonight, and I can go back and search if the board would like.
I had that concern when I first saw it, but then as I read through it, I thought I found a sentence in there that clarified that we have that right, but I haven't been able to find it again.
Don't you keep looking for it. Amanda, you have a question?
Yes, Joe, so you're saying that the questioning here by the police would be in a scenario that is outside of the school, and in the process of the investigation, the police are questioning the students. It doesn't necessarily mean it's an act that's being done on school time, school property?
It may or may not be.
Okay.
And if you were to think of situations, it may involve drugs, using that as an example, where drug dealing may be going on outside, in the home, and the police are looking to do their job to investigate that report, the student's availability may only be during the school day. Sometimes we run into situations where students are not available outside of the day, do runaway situations, whatever the thing be. The police do occasionally request to interview a student during the day. Other situations may involve abuse that is happening in the home, where we have suspect that there is abuse happening in the home, we call it into a police officer. If the policy is written that we would contact the parent before the officer investigated the child, talked to the child, we could be tipping the abuser off that the police are there, thus impeding the investigation and the safety of that child.
Okay, so follow up. When and if the child is questioned by a police officer, if the child is a minor, will they have some sort of other legal representation there with them?
The police have the right to investigate as they need to, and they will use their judgment as they need to. When, again, when you're having situations where a minor is a victim of abuse and the police need to come in and talk to that child, if we have to call the police before that happened, or call the parents before that investigation were to happen, we could be letting the abuser know that this child is... I mean, if you think about the grand scheme of what an officer could show up to question situations, again, that involve drugs, if there's dealing going on or whatever it might be, again, having the officer come in, if we call home and say your child's being, all the evidence could be gone. Therefore, that's why you would call after instead of before. Those calls are usually deferred to the police to make the notification because they're the ones then that are conducting the investigation. So we can look into it further if that's needed?
Let's.
Okay.
I'm just very uncomfortable with it, and I hope others are too. The example you're giving is just one of.
The example I'm giving, though, is very real.
Doesn't matter, it's one of. And, you know, you get so many instances of kids giving false confessions or just to... You know, there's all sorts of bad things that there's history of happening here. Whenever I've dealt with children in our system, you know, through our process, I'm always very careful not to put them in a situation where they're going to create their life more difficult for them legally. I never asked them to do that. And because that's not what we're here for. We're not here to make a child's life more difficult legally. And school resource officers are there for the safety of the school. They're not there to basically investigate crimes in our school.
We will look deeper into this one.
I do have a question. Did we talk to any... I mean, my concern about it would be that I know that, or I've heard that if you question a minor without notifying the parent that that questioning, a good lawyer would kill that in a second. So have we talked to the DA or anybody about what that looks like? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that would be my concern, is if we do have, like what you're talking about, and we talk to this, and that gets thrown out, the parents are tipped off anyway, and now we've got the kid in the mix of it, is my concern.
And that's where we'll look.
Is it admissible in a court of law if we talk to that kid without...
And it's the police case.
Yeah, I know. Well, I know it's their call, and they got to deal with it.
Investigate it, make the recommendation with the district attorney, the district attorney then proceeds forward.
We can also be putting the children in danger if that evidence is not admissible, and now we've just tipped off the parents that the kid's informing on them.
We will dig deeper.
I think part of that bill, as you're discussing that at the committee level, is, you know, understanding, you know, what are the statutes driving, you know, the police and their rights to investigate and how that goes about, because we just don't have a sense of that either, you know?
We can do that.
I'm not...
Mr. Brian?
I'm very comfortable of having it back at committee and letting the committee do their work, Mr. Baumgart, but may I add this one point of content? Before having officers in our school, we had social workers and counselors that would be dealing with these instances of child abuse and then reporting it as appropriate to the authorities for them to investigate further. We wouldn't have a police officer interrogating a child. We'd have trained staff that we employ talking to that child and trying to find out what's going on and reporting that to the authorities. So the example Mr. Cook gives to me is something I'm not used to thinking that we'd be doing in our schools, where we'd have police officers coming in to interrogate a student about their home environment. It's just new to me, and that's all, I'm just adding that input to the committee, that's all.
I agree. Okay, that one we will not be voting on tonight. 7530.02, Staff and School Officials Use of Personal Communication Devices. There's a lot of red and green in here, and the bulk of it is changing and adding the word "school officials" in there. "school officials" in there. There is some references on the next page, it'll be the second page, the fact that some of this information could become record, records based if you are using a PCD to record anything. And that is contained on the second page and probably repeats itself. No, it doesn't. That's something else on the next page. Revised to Address Staff and School Official Use of Wireless Communication Devices for Business-Related Purposes Regardless of Whether the Instrument Is Provided by the Board or Privately Owned by the Employee. Policy Contains Provisions Related to Safe and Appropriate Use of the PCDs, Confidentiality of Information Contained on PCDs, Privacy and Archiving. If it is dealing with some kind of a issue that would be normally recorded on paper. Anything else on that one?
Mr. Ryan?
There's just some wording errors in this. Again, we're back to this where situations or job responsibilities include regular driving and accepting of business calls, the employer or school official should, should use, should use of, "hand-free."
Where are you?
I've got noted.
You got noted?
Should use hands-free, yep.
I would say, I, not only do I have a problem with the way it's worded, obviously that's obvious, but how it's worded is also an issue. I mean, we're saying should instead of must.
Yeah, we are...
I mean, I don't even like them using "hand-free" to be honest with you. I mean, that's considered in some areas, you're not allowed to do that either, but I can say, I can settle for "must use hand-free."
You can change that.
Are we looking for an amendment? Well, we don't have a motion yet, so.
We don't have motions, let's just make a change.
Okay.
Must use.
I'm good with that.
Right?
We're okay with that, Mr. Parliamentarian, right?
Yeah. So it's a good word.
Okay.
Okay. And the other policy is much easier to deal with. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, this is not, it is. Student Accident Insurance Policy, 8760. We are deleting that because we do not provide student accident insurance in our district, so. Pardon?
Aren't we on the one before that?
Threats of Violence? That was one of the new ones.
Oh, sorry, yes. Thank you.
That's, yeah, you can't see that maybe.
Yeah, we bumped that one up in the first part, bills, yeah.
There was a stapling error in some of the packets. So, Mr. Reinacek, I see where you're...
Yeah, it got confusing.
In the wrong thing.
Late.
Yep.
We're all set, okay? So I would be moving for, get back to the right list here, I would be moving for approval of revision 4162. Which one did I say we're going to hold out?
We were holding out 7530.
5540.
4162 would be, I'm moving for approval of that, 7530.02 and 8760, Student Accident Insurance. I will move for approval of those three.
My second.
Second by Ms. Voight? Discussion, more discussion? See the smile on my face, right? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Bill?
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
Getting smaller.
Yes, yes. That was more efficient than our older way of doing things, right?
I think so.
So.
We, and we'll clean up the presentation next time around, too.
Thank you. Moving on to our other business, are there any recommendations for future board or committee actions to put on this agenda or committee agendas? Mr. Dietz?
I'm going to request that administration from all three high schools make a presentation in a future teacher and teaching and learning committee meeting, preferably on June 4th at 6:00 PM. Topics to be addressed would be, how does a site decide if a course will be offered or dropped? Is it based only on enrollment? What is the maximum class size? What communication exists between schools, parents, students and staff? What populations of students are only given the option of going to another school or to take any achieved class? Who pays for transportation if students go to another school? How does transportation occur? What amount of time and instruction is lost for students that are traveling to and from a school to take a course? And then also to explain the differences between early college credit program and the Start College Now program because I think there's a lot of confusion with that.
I think maybe to summarize at least a good bulk of that is you're looking at how the high school scheduling process works?
Sure.
Would that be a good way to kind of summarize that?
Yeah.
Mr. Baumgart?
Received a pretty thorough letter from Dan Keizer on that.
He did, yes.
Yeah.
But you'd like to agendize that, you're recommending that to the TNL chair and... Sure.
Right to Jordan, you just copy me on it and make sure.
Okay.
All right, other suggestions? Mr. Ryan?
At FNF the other night, the famous school resource officer, I believe we, at the end, we talked about having a board work session, possibly on school resource offices?
Yeah, I think that, you know, and Bill, you had mentioned this, that we really probably need to broaden the school resource discussion amongst the entire board as opposed to having only take place, at least a lot of the heavy lifting take place at FNF. There still will be a contract that will go through FNF, but...
Well, what I'm saying is that there's a lot of unknowns regarding our present program and a lot of unknowns about what we'd want going forward and that's where a board work session is really needed.
Needs some discussion there.
Yeah. So, you know, one of the questions that came up is how often are the officers in our schools? I don't think anybody really knows how often they come and how often they go right now. I don't think we keep track of them. We don't, we don't have them punch in and out. So, you know, we have also done some research on what other schools are doing, what they're costing. So there's a lot of data that both Joe and Darren have been collecting, which we could use at a board work session at some point in time.
Okay. Ms. Reinacek?
Thank you. Can we have an update on our dress code? It's going to be getting warmer out and I know the shorts are going to be worn and the skirts and the tank tops and all of that and I just, I've heard that they don't enforce because when they do, then the parents get upset because they're being told to come pick up their child or that their child isn't dressed appropriately. But if we're not, if we have rules, if we have policies and we're not enforcing them and letting the parents dictate what their child can wear, when we have rules that it's a fingertip rule, then I don't think that's right. So can we address that?
Yeah, it's typically been addressed in the past. This is not the first time that this has been discussed. It's typically addressed at policy because there's a policy on that. So I would probably direct that. You can look at it. I, manner. Policy probably isn't as defined as I think Karen and I agree.
But is it enforced?
We have policy that drives it and then we have implementation of the policy, but as far as the committee goes, that's where this has in the past gone because I know this has not been the first discussion we've had on, on that. You know, sometimes kids start out, the parents see the kids in one set of clothes, the kid goes to school, they change and do a different set of clothes and, I mean, it's, there's a lot to discuss on that. Mr. Ryan?
Point of order, we do want to be careful that we're not debating something that's not on the agenda.
Sure.
Fair enough. I agree with her though, that, just, but I, we're not able, I do agree with Karen on this, so.
I guess it's not a policy issue, it's an enforcement issue, as Bill said, because if we keep visiting this, that's a problem that we're not enforcing it, so.
We'll figure out what level that makes sense to discuss that.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions? Good ideas, good ideas. I did want to announce that we, with the retirement of Mrs. Brzezink, as part of other business, we do have an opening on the board and as you know, we go through an appointment process. We're going to be getting a notification out, Sue, Saturday?
Friday morning.
Friday, okay. And then we usually give people about 10 days to respond whether they're interested or not in that. And I believe on May 29th, we'll hold our interviewing process and the appointment process. So just in general, I wanted to announce that, that other piece of business. All right. And we do not have a need to go into executive session, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight. Lot to go over. We stand adjourned.